All right, I'm gonna call the Wednesday, June eighth, two twenty, twenty twenty-two Nottingham Planning Board Meeting to Order. As a reminder to everybody here, if you haven't already, please sign in so it can be recorded in the official minutes. We have a good number of cases on the agenda tonight, and we will be taking them in order. Before we begin, I'm gonna go ahead and go around the room and have everybody introduce themselves, please, starting with on my right.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Susan Mooney.
Sherry Sandley.
Charlie Anderson.
Blair Haney, SRPC.
And Mr. Davies will be seated and voting for Mr. Anderson tonight. So the first case on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for case number twenty-two dash zero zero five dash LLA. It's an application for Matt and Paul Bergeron requesting a lot line adjustment of three adjacent lots. Properties are located at eight and nine Cahill Lane in Nottingham, Hampshire, identified as tax map sixty-eight, lots forty-nine, forty-nine dash one, and forty-nine dash two. Do we have anybody here for that?
Matt Bergeron. So I own forty-nine one and forty-nine two, and my dad's at forty-nine. This is the very end of Cahill Lane, which was originally back in the fifties, John Cahill's family's property. Doug Lieb subdivided it in two thousand ten to two thousand twelve. I think it took him a while to do it. I've purchased where I live and the vacant lot next door, and my dad lives on the end at forty-nine, nine Cahill Lane. So kind of the backstory of this was with the, um, do you want me to just do this like this?
Yeah, just get a quick overview and then we'll, uh, and then we'll work on it.
I didn't know if I was like not following process or anything.
So first thing is just a quick overview and then we'll do, uh, we'll look at the application itself.
So I'm essentially looking to adjust the lot lines between the lots that I own and very minimally affect my dad's lot. And the purpose of this is because of the last warrant article in twenty-twenty-two, I think it was Article nineteen again, the town has relinquished the town road status at the very end of Cahill Lane, which is essentially my driveway and my dad's driveway. And so this lot line adjustment will result in all three lots maintaining two acres and allow all three lots to have some form of frontage where the town road now ends, where its terminus is.
Okay. So the first mo- action on this for the board would be to move on the completion of the application itself. Mr. Haney, do you have any comment on that?
No, it looked fine to me.
In that case, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to accept case number two-two dash zero zero five dash LLA as complete.
I second.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Mooney. Any further discussion on that? All is a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries six-zero. And I'll back up, sorry. So the way cases are handled, first, if it's a new case, we have to act on the application itself and accept it as complete or not. Once it's accepted as complete, then we can have further discussion, and then we can open the public hearing to, uh, to the public as well for a butter testimony. Mr. Bergeron, go ahead and, uh, now you can give us a little bit more on that. Yeah, sorry, we have one more formality that's always good to clear up now.
I'll make a motion that case number two-two dash zero zero five dash LLA is not a product of regional impact.
I'll second.
The motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? All is a favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries six-zero. And, um, we have Ms. Jones that is also here tonight as an alternate. She will be participating but not voting.
Do you think this will actually sit up here without any sort of structure? You guys want this up here?
I think we all have copies, but it's good, you know.
Do you have the copies over there? Cause we don't have any.
I have the small one.
I have copy.
I have a big one you guys can look at as well.
Drop right here if someone.
Yeah, I have one at home. That's what I think.
That's partly why I'm late is I went back to my.
Well, it's your special. You get the big one.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing I didn't mention was part of the warrant article, which kind of terminated Cahill Lane as a public way at the intersection of tax map sixty-eight, law fifty-one, and tax map sixty-eight, law forty-nine, was to provide a town truck easement so that the town trucks could turn around. And so that's also detailed on this plan and addressed in that. And I've met with, um, I didn't meet with the fire chief, but I saw his notes that he commented on it, that he was okay with it. It looked like. And I met with Sean, the road agent, actually out there on site, and he's the one that devised exactly what he needed for dimensions for all of his equipment to be able to turn around.
Mr. Haney, do you have any, uh, did you want to go over your, your review?
Yeah, I mean, I would just point out that in the executive summary, I spent a lot of time on this trying to wrap my head around it. It is a little convoluted, and it's not no fault of anybody's, and you know, but it, it just, what they're trying to accomplish is, is it had a lot of details to it. And I spent a lot of time going through it. I even emailed my summary to Mr. Landry, the surveyor who put it together to just say is, you know, what I'm, how I'm understanding this, what you're trying to accomplish here, is this an accurate representation? And he said yes. So in the summary, I, I, I think you can try to piece together what the goals are here. I have the four bullets. As gentlemen's mentioned, there's two warrant articles from twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two that impact this. And part of their goal is to satisfy those two warrant articles. And then, again, as he also mentioned, uh, two of the lots went from zero frontage to ten feet of frontage. Ten's not a lot. It's not even close to ours minimum, but it's something, right? So it gives them at least a touch, uh, in some way on a public, a public way. And then finally, again, as mentioned, the hammerhead truck turnaround, that was essentially, you know, uh, the other piece to it. So, you know, in all, it's a, it's a complex lot line adjustment as far as lot line adjustments go, but it is trying to satisfy a lot of different things in an area that, you know, was sort of laid out in a very haphazard way, you know, from back in the day. And this is getting us towards cleaning some things up and giving it some organization. I think in my, uh, memo, I had talked about the two waiver requests. You know, they're not, or the one waiver request about rebar as opposed to the granite. Doesn't appear to be a huge ask, but, you know, there may be places where granite could go, and then if it can't, they put in the rebar. That would be a, uh, a meeting point if you didn't feel comfortable just letting them do the rebar. Beyond that, I, as I mentioned, I think it's a, it's a, you know, it serves a public interest and it addresses the two warrant articles. It satisfies the two warrant articles. And, um, you know, and, oh, and I did mention that there is gonna be an easement that will be turned over to the town for the purposes of that turnaround. So maybe a condition is to have the town attorney look at that. I'm not actually sure how you guys typically handle easements that are granted to the town. So, you know, whatever your typical procedure is, that may be something you wanna do.
Yep, I appreciate that. Yeah, I don't think this board has the purview to necessarily accept the easement. It would ultimately be the select board that.
Oh, right, yeah, good point.
Can do that, so we could make that a condition as well, that it's accepted and approved, you know, by them. Does anybody on the board have any comment on this before we open the, uh, the public piece of it?
Um, I, too, have found it very convoluted. I can find forty-nine one and forty-nine two, but I don't know where lot forty-nine is. Is it over here on the right, but not labeled?
It kind of makes a left-hand turn. It comes off the row and then makes.
Thank you. I needed that. Thank you.
But it goes down to the other section. So I, so I was trying to reread the, uh, the language of the warrant article, cause it seems like some of the intent is to get frontage on a public road or for, you know, ten feet of frontage, I think it was. But if, if the language of the warrant article i- is extinguishing public interest, where did extinguish the public interest? Was it between lot forty-nine and fifty-one, I believe?
So if you see the intersection there of lot, the warrant article identifies the terminus of Cahill Lane as the northwestern boundary of lot fifty-one, tax map sixty-eight, lot fifty-one. So that is kind of where my closest neighbor, or my dad's closest neighbor intersects with my dad's lot. So it's that, um, I can point it out to you if you'd like.
No, I got it. Yeah, so, so, okay.
That's why we had the, those narrow lot lines of ten feet right there, because that is the terminus of the public way.
Right, okay. So if the public way is ending between fifty-one and forty-nine, then any, then these additional lots, uh, access out back, wouldn't be getting, uh, frontage on that, onto the public way would be my.
No, they.
Understanding of it. Cause there's gonna, there's gonna be a truck easement, but that's not a, the same as a, I wouldn't think that's the same.
Can I come up and show it to you?
Well, the frontage is the little L four, L five.
Exactly.
The ten feet, so they're basically getting little strips to.
So the frontage is labeled as L one, L two, and L three is the frontage for lot forty-nine. L four is the frontage for lot forty-nine dash one. L five is the frontage for lot forty-nine.
Oh, okay, so you're just making ten foot, like, ten foot.
Yeah, there's a little strip. So which, I'm sorry, which lot did you say doesn't currently? Is it forty?
Lot forty-nine and forty-nine dash one currently have no frontage.
Okay, so all of that fifty foot there is basically held by forty-nine existing. Gotcha. All right, that was really my only question was trying to.
The, um, the original layout of these three lots was not intended, um, in essence, for Cahill Lane to be a public way at any time. And so when that was made a public way, um, it completely, basically, I think that you guys are starting to deal with, um, roads having setbacks now, and so now this public way road, the setback, I mean, the fifty-foot setback off of it cuts through my kitchen. So the public way, which was my driveway, now practically goes through our house. So the public way ending down here, we had to steal some of the frontage from lot forty-nine dash two and give it to lot forty-nine and forty-nine dash one.
Yep, okay. And that's really, so like a lot of the side lot lines that kind of chase down to the lake, those don't really change except for just some minor adjustments.
No lake frontage is changing at all. The only areas that are changing are those areas around that frontage intersection of Cahill Lane. I can show you the current, like, one if you want.
If you have that, that would be helpful. I think I've got it now. It's, I've kind of focused it on the area that you're changing.
Yeah.
So in some ways, I mean, it's a little bit unique, cause it's based on a warrant article, so as opposed to like a, just a regular, say, lot line adjustments. So in some ways, we're taking what are potentially more conforming lots, though, and making them slightly less in that we're getting, there's technically frontage on a town road right now that we would be making much, much smaller.
So technically, right, I mean, if, my understanding is that that warrant article, once the town voted to relinquish the public way.
Yep.
That left lot forty-nine dash one and lot forty-nine with zero road frontage. So this would accomplish making them more conforming. So they'd still be two acres, but now they would have at least ten feet of frontage on a public way. Whereas right now, as it stands, there's no frontage. Because lot forty-nine dash two encompasses all of the frontage now that the public way ends where it ends.
Are you thinking of the previous warrant article that would have, in theory, s- accepted his driveway, which then that's his frontage? Is that what you were thinking of? Like where?
Right, cause the second, the second.
Under that, under that, they would have had any frontage, well, it would have been bisecting the lots, but.
And the second warrant article is conditional.
Do you wanna look at the, uh?
Yeah, I'd be curious to see the existing if you have it.
That'd be great.
The record plan, yeah.
So.
Stop, see, I have to be careful when you're walking, please.
Your, this, I don't know.
Yep.
So this is forty-nine dash, uh, one, this is forty-nine, and as you can see, Cahill Lane now ends, uh, right here. So all of this is forty-nine dash two, so this lot has zero frontage. And this lot, um, technically doesn't have any frontage either. That would be considered frontage or not when Cahill Lane ends here? I was told that's not, it's not.
But the first warrant article that went through accepted Cahill Lane.
This was.
So this, what I'm saying is all these lots then have frontage because of, because of this, this travel lane being, being that. And then this warrant article is conditional. So obviously, the, the way the warrant articles were, it was, it made it a little bit, um, some unique cir- circumstances for the town that, you know, we're, we're feeling our way through and trying to, trying to handle as best as, uh, we can as a board and a town.
And from what I see on this plan that you're leaving as the easement is essentially just the same line work that I'm seeing here from some of these old lot lines. It's just gonna be shown as an easement going forward, right? For this easement, that now, so this is the new plan, so this easement boundary that's shown here is kind of detailed here. That's essentially the same line work.
The easement is just literally right here, this little T in red, right here, detailed there.
So is that the truck turnaround?
Yes.
Now this, so this, this bulb per se, which is kind of the, I guess, the shape I'm seeing here from the, I guess, what you'd call the existing. So this is still called an easement area, but, oh, this is the D, I got you.
So all of this is.
I got you.
The one I've discontinued.
I got you, okay.
Here's the easement.
That makes sense.
So there'd be no, no more proposed, like, truck turnaround?
The truck turnaround now is limited to a T turnaround.
Right.
Here at the entrance. Which I'm guessing in Sean's eyes is more realistic than having the town have a bulb, which you're not gonna realistically destroy everybody's driveway to construct a rabid bulb, so.
The proposal when Sean and I were out there together is this is all on the lake, Cahill Lane, this section of it, where the town road ends is right along the lake. And so rather than have to disrupt areas along the lake within the fifty-foot waterfront buffer, I mean, the whole thing's within the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot waterfront buffer. So the less disturbance, probably the better. And we have a feasible area that's in existence that he was one hundred percent on board with and said, I can definitely make this work, and this is where I would like it to be. So I kind of went with what he said, and I would prefer to have as little instruction out there, not only from an economic standpoint, but a disruption and shoreland permitting and things like that.
Sure.
And the, the traveled way access easement for lot forty-nine, that's existing now, correct? That, that's not proposed to be moved, like, the way the road, it goes now?
No.
Does that exist?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so part of it would actually be discontinued and turned into lawn.
Which, um, has not been done yet, but was supposed to be done according to DES, um, that wanted that area. They want as much within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the lake.
Sure.
As pervious, vegetated surface as possible.
Yep.
So they, um, part of an original shoreline permit was to have that reclaimed. And then when the town voted to make that the town road, that was kind of a shock. And I said, well, I have a DES article, uh, shoreline permit that wants that to be reclaimed as vegetated, so.
Yep. And again, those ten-foot strips, those are actually easements, right? Those aren't, you don't plan on moving the lot lines down there, making like, like, narrow?
No, I think those are shown as.
Are you showing us, is that where the new lot lines will be, or is that just?
Those are the lot lines.
Yeah.
Yep.
Essentially forty-nine dash one has that little neck that comes down.
Yes.
But then forty-nine, just the line bumps over to give the ten feet.
The goal was to create road frontage where there currently is none.
It's a unique.
And still maintain two-acre lots so that we weren't resulting in something going less conforming. Cause right now, it's all two acres, but two of the lots don't have any road frontage.
It's a unique one where the, the warrant article discontinued it at this point. But obviously, there was no surveying work to establish that line. This would establish that line, but also make some adjustments.
Well, there is an iron pen where the, um.
Right, but it, yeah, it's, it's all via language, nothing on a plan, but I get that basically what you're doing is recreating that on, I guess, the first plan that would be recorded as such.
I think it makes sense to me.
Is there any, uh, any other discussion on the board? If not, uh, so I'll open the public hearing portion of it. This is the time where any butters that would like to speak for the application can come up first. Against, or just with general questions, would come up second, and if you do come up, please just, uh, make sure to address comments towards the board and identify yourself, um, for the record, please. Second chance, anybody? Okay, I will, uh, close the public hearing portion of it. So I think there's a, there'd be a few things. Obviously, we've got, uh, the discussion about the monuments for the waivers. We should, we would wanna act on waivers. First, before doing any kind of approval, and then, uh, we, one of the conditions, if this were to be approved, would have to be that the select board would have to be given the easement language, uh, and, and would have to accept, uh, the easement board, and to get their acceptance of it. And you haven't been before the select board yet, right, for the, any easement language you haven't drafted.
No, um, they wanted a plan.
Yep.
That showed the easement before we did the language around it. And I knew that I would pursue this lot line adjustment to get frontage on my lot and my dad's lot.
Okay.
So I was kind of, I didn't know if, parked me for the horse or.
Right.
And I also wanted to get Sean's input, cause he's gonna be one turning around the trucks. So I'm open to whatever their interpretation is in terms of the language that needs to be there.
Yep.
For, to make sure that it's recorded properly.
Yeah, another part with the law and adjustment, unlike a subdivision, uh, when a subdivision is accepted, it's not, uh, it's, um, it's, it's, when it's approved, it's approved, whereas a lot line adjustment, nothing actually happens until it's, the deeds are recorded, is my understanding. So correct me if I'm wrong. So there's sometimes where law and adjustments can be approved, and they never actually occur, because the deeds never get recorded. So we've probably put a timeline on that as well, just to make sure it's not floating out there. So, um, if there's no further discussion, the first thing we should do would be to act on waivers.
Make a motion if somebody's, uh, wants to jump on it. I'll make a motion to approve the waiver request from section eleven point eight of the subdivision regulations, requiring granite, um, with the proposal to install rebar with ID cap.
I'll second.
Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? See, none. All is a favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six-zero. And that was a motion by Mr. McKinnon and a second by Ms. Anderson. And, um, so again, i- if this was anything else other than, uh, trying to clean up warrant articles, I think we would have a little bit more, um, before us, but, uh, again, seeing that it's, the intent seems to be to clear up confusion created by warrant articles and, um, and to move forward from there, I, I think we're in a place that we're okay to act on, on a conditional approval.
Yep.
Again, one of the conditions we should mention would be that on the final plan, that any area where the rebar is gonna be used instead of granite monuments, that that be clearly identified. And then the, uh, the easement language, um, for the, the select board. And actually, I don't even know if we need to make that a condition, um, if they, if they don't accept it, then I think it makes this decision move, would be my.
Yeah, because my understanding is the warrant article was contingent upon, um, approving an easement.
Yep.
Like, that's the way the language seemed to me, so.
Right, and our approval does not accept the easement, basically, you know, for the town. We, we don't have that authority.
Are you suggesting making, though, the lot line adjustments contingent upon acceptance of the, uh, selectman?
I was, I was saying, I don't know if we need to do that.
Okay.
Because does that put them in the quandary of, well, they want, the select board wants, yeah.
Different easement, yeah.
The language, I mean, we can condition it that way.
We can condition that the select board must approve easement language, and then there is.
That's what I was.
That doesn't occur, occur. Keep it vague like that. If they don't, then it's a.
Cause there's still parts of this that could be recorded without them, right? If it's been approved here?
I suppose so, if the deeds are, uh, changed.
In theory, and then, I guess, in the future, if the easement wasn't carried out, that'd probably just be a title issue or something like that in the future.
So I think, it's, I think it's okay to conditionally approve. I think that would give the select board enough.
Yeah.
Indication on our part, um, on the plan board's part, and, and then we can go that way. That way you don't get stuck of, uh, having to re- reapply or anything.
I'll make a motion if nobody has anything else.
We're gonna put a time on it, right?
Would be, yes.
Is there an idea?
What would be a good time, I think?
I would, I guess that's a good, I would say normally we'd do like twelve months. I don't know if that's sufficient time.
Am I in control of the select board, looking at the easement and, I mean, twelve months sounds.
I think it's a matter of getting it drafted up and getting any language drafted to the, to the town for them to accept.
Okay.
And I think they.
They'll probably ask.
Is that something they'd want me to draft the language, or I'd be fine with them drafting the language and?
Those.
Right.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I'd be surprised if they wanted to draft it. They would probably wanna look at it.
Yeah, they, I think they'd want you to provide, which Steve Landry can do, um, so that, provide the language that's already shown on the plan. It's basically an easement description.
There is some language.
So as long as there's an easement description, that's essentially what they're, uh, asking for, cause that would get recorded at the registry.
Okay.
But they'll probably send it to town council just for review.
That's exactly.
That's probably gonna be the longest turnaround, is just waiting for, if you get it to the board of selectmen and the town administrator. I assume the town council is probably gonna be the longest wait period.
Yeah, if you write it, it'll move faster, and then they can react to it.
Sounds good.
All right, um, then I'll make a motion, uh, that we ex- approve case number two-two dash zero zero five dash LLA, with the standard conditions, um, including that rebar where set on the project as allowed by the waiver be shown on the final plan and easement language be approved by the board of selectmen.
Second.
That's a motion by Mr. McKinnon.
Good time.
Second by Ms. Anderson.
Within twelve months, so within the same approval period that we normally?
Twelve months, yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? See, none. All is a favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, none. Motion carries six-zero. All right, thank you. That gave you direction enough. If you, so if you get that to the town administrator, Chris Sterndale, uh, he'll coordinate with the select board, um, either. He should be able to give you some more direction on that piece of it. he'll, should be able to give you some more direction on that piece of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next, uh, case on the agenda is case twenty-two dash zero-zero-six dash SUV, application from Isabella and Elizabeth Linsky requesting a two-lot subdivision. Property located at sixty-four Priest Road, uh, identified as tax map twenty lot two dash one. If you could please, uh, identify yourself, sir, and then give us a, uh, just a quick summary of it, and then we'll open it.
Certainly. My name is Robert Stewart. I'm from RCS Designs. Um, I am the septic designer while in scientist, um, that worked on this project with Ekman Engineering. This property is located at sixty-four Priest Road, map twenty lot six. It is currently a five-point-five-nine acre lot, uh, and what is proposed is a simple, uh, subdivision resulting in two lots of three-point-five-one acres and two-point-oh-eight acres. That's all I've got for now.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Haney, did, you were able to review the application? Is there anything on there that would prevent us, or feel like we should discuss to, uh, regarding completeness?
Uh, no, the only thing I pointed out that the, the plan date submitted was from two thousand and eighteen. I didn't know if you had any type of limitations on how long a survey is valid for, but, um, I did just make note of that. Um, beyond that, it's, uh, two waivers, uh, two waiver requests. One is for test pits. I guess there was a couple that were done, and then they went out and reconfirmed the status or the condition with another test pit. And, um, there was, uh, how did I put this? So it's, it says that the perk test is supposed to be located within the four K area, and both perk tests show on the plan as being outside the four K area. So, uh, you know, they did do what they said they were gonna do, which is to go out and move fifty feet from the original single test pits. Um, and it doesn't show where they did that. I mean, they just say within fifty feet, um, you know, I guess you could presume it's inside the four K area, because it would probably be, um, but, uh, it, that, on, on the plan is just shown one test pit. So that's the waiver request.
So, uh, you know, how you wanna interpret that in terms of completeness is that's up to you.
What?
I think, I think those are, uh, things that we can address during the, during the, um, the hearing. Thank you for pointing those out. Anybody that would like, would you really like to make a motion on the, uh, completeness?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, um, accept this complete case number twenty-two dash zero-zero-six dash SUV.
Is there a second?
One second.
That's a motion by Ms. Mooney and a second by Mr. McKinnon. Um, is there any further discussion? See, none. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, uh, motion carries six zero. So the second one would be the, uh, motion regarding regional impacts. Would anybody like to make a motion on that?
Yeah, make a motion, case twenty-two zero-zero-six SUV is not, um, regional impact. A second?
That's a motion by Ms. Anderson and a second by Ms. Mooney. Any further discussion? See, none. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, uh, motion carries six zero. All right. So now we can get into a little bit further discussion. Is there anything else that you wanted to, uh, kind of address to us?
Sure. Um, what we, what we have done here is we have a, an easement access onto this lot. The reason for that is it exists now today. Um, and that is to access the barn and, and for parking for the parent tract. Uh, the driveway for this lot, the new lot, is proposed right here. So we, we've got, um, proposed easement on that. As far as the test pits go, that was my fault. Uh, I went out and did test pits not, and just looking to meet, uh, state regulations and obviously didn't read county Nottingham regulations, so I didn't do that. So when I did, um, understand the error that I made, I went out and confirmed the two test pits fifty feet away. I can show those on the plan as a condition, and if need be, I can move the two four K areas, one here, one here. I can move the four, four K areas and manipulate them so that they, uh, include, um, the perk test as well, if, if that's, if that clears things up a little bit.
Yeah, usually we do have, for our, our town, we do require that they be in the, uh, pro, in the four K area, the two, um, so, so that would work.
Understood.
But, yep, as long, and then obviously the, the four K area, you'd wanna make sure it meets the, uh, continues to meet with the setbacks, which it looks like there's, there's room.
Sure, the, the last thing I wanna just mention is that it has received state subdivision approval, because both lots are less than five acres. And I've included that in the package.
And then, so the proposed lot, um, twenty-six parcel A, uh, so the, what, what's the total frontage on that now, and is that includes a little?
Two-hundred-and-twenty plus feet.
With two-hundred-and-twenty-ish?
Yeah, two-hundred-and-twenty plus.
And is that including the distance for the easement, for the?
That does include the distance for the easement, yes.
Do we know how, how wide that easement is? Is that a, it looks like it's E-two?
Uh, I can tell you.
Thirty-two feet, is that?
Yeah, so if you took out the easement, it'd be
Plus L-six.
under, under two-hundred.
It's thirty-five.
So E-two is thirty-ish feet, and then L-six is another twenty feet, is that right?
Correct.
But that. So that, that corner, that triangle, that small triangle there where like L-six is the, and E-five are the measurements of, that would belong to parcel A?
The, that easement, par, yes, yes, as far as E-two, L-six, L-seven, and, um, what is called out is one-twenty-nine forty-eight feet. All those added together, can't tell you off the top of my head, but it's, uh, two-twenty plus, I believe.
Okay. And the cemetery's not on?
Cemetery's not included.
Included, okay.
In any way.
So that thirty feet is just to provide access to the barn?
Correct.
Not for the house or any other?
Correct.
Buildings?
Well, isn't that, wait, is, isn't, isn't that the access for the, that's the common access point, right, for the house? Is that where like they enter for the house? Like, they're just coming home?
A lot, uh, th- th- some of the, some of the parking, they park out in the front, um,
Okay.
but in the winter, that's where they park is out by that barn, um.
So there is another, there's another driveway location somewhere in there?
No, there is not. That is the only driveway location. Apparently.
You mean, other lot has this proposed new drive.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm thinking the existing house, so if, if the, if they, the existing house, if they need to park their car in what you'd call their driveway, they would need to go through that access easement?
Correct.
To get off the road?
Correct. Typically, that's what they do during the winter.
Okay.
Summer months, they're parking out, there's, 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 there's enough distance between, um, what is a fence there and, and the road itself that that's where they typically park in the summer, but in the winter, they've gotta be off the road, so they park out by the barn or where that current well is. Which shows this current well.
Issue with that is that, I guess it's fine to park there, but that's in the right of way, if you park there in the summer. So deem the dri, I mean, this lot's driveway is through the easement, I guess, going forward.
Yeah, and, and then one other thing, uh, that, I don't know if there's enough room to shift on, but normally, in our regs, the, uh, the well radius has to be fully contained on the lot, which obviously you don't have a control of where the well is now for the, you know, if it's going potentially off the lot line to Priest Road, but there is control over it for the, uh, the proposed property line coming in. So I guess, one, one, looking at the easement, the driveway piece, and where that possibly could create it, I'm looking at our regs with, uh, for access fifteen-point-one-point-two in the subdivision regs, where it talks about independent access in frontage on a, a classified or better road. Don't know if this scenario was better than, than doing a shared driveway. It seems like the way this is being drawn up, a shared driveway would be a, a better, um, solution. You know, using that, that spot, that way the, the land would actually still belong to proposed six, six A. And you, you wouldn't have that, that whole easement, um, scenario occurring. It, it's in a kind of a perfect location for that, because it's, it would be on a common lot line, on a common boundary. And it, it, you know, it's there now.
We're not opposed to that, um, and that, we, we still would, we're still requesting to have that easement there for the common drive, obviously, but not opposed to that. I mean, we can't take away the existing drive. It just, um, obviously, um, the marketability of the lot, which I know that you don't have any opinion on, but, uh, the owner does. And, um, it's more marketable if it's got its own drive, and so that's why we did it that way.
I mean, wouldn't the other option be to that, um, take that easement, keep that on the main also, and then uh, go to get a variance on your frontage for the other lot?
Just kind of two, I mean, if they do, because if they do the
Either they do.
common driveway, that also requires variant, uh, feedback from the, from the board anyway, doesn't it? Which, which one's the one that requires the?
No, if, if it's a shared driveway, we allow, we allow that and we have.
On the common line, we, we can do that, yeah.
Right, if it, it goes off the common line, um, you know, this looks like it's very close to being.
But the easement was some under, uh, frontage. So that's what they're gonna need, that's what, uh, Carolina's saying, that they're gonna need to go to the ZVA for that.
If they change the line, but the easement currently doesn't affect the frontage.
Right.
Easement doesn't discount the frontage.
Easement's only an easement to travel over that section of land.
But.
But the easement belongs to the other lot.
But, but in reality.
Correct, that's just for access, it's not.
In, in reality, this easement, um, protects or provides two-hundred-foot of frontage for the lot that's being subdivided on.
Correct.
So I just think it would, in my personal opinion, it would be cleaner to, um, um, cut that property line, so the driveway belongs to the parent lot, and then go for variance for less than two-hundred-foot of frontage.
That's assuming that I can go and make an argument for variance for frontage.
I don't think you'll have much problem. I'm saying that off the record.
I think in the long run too, I mean, if at one, at any point in time the current owner goes to sell this kind of parent lot, it's gonna, gonna market better if it's got its own driveway than if it's got an easement, which then you never know who your neighbor is.
And be one and done, and no fuss, no muss between property owners down the road.
I mean, I think.
But the, the discussions that we had was if we can't get two driveways, that we would use that as a common drive. So that's where we are right now, is that we'd rather do that than go through the zoning process.
Okay.
Well, so the, but the issue of the way it's shown currently is that doesn't meet our definition of kept to the common boundary, so under the current easement layout, it would require a variance, because boundary actually, like the easement, there's a, it doesn't straddle the boundary. Currently, it kind of cuts it along this little triangle of land that's left over. Because generally that, like all the subdivisions that we've, in the more recent subdivisions, is there's essentially an equidistant easement granted on either side of a common boundary, and then the driveway split off, you know, and goes in fifty feet, and then people can choose where their driveway goes. So the way it's drawn currently, that easement essentially is a strip across the new lot with, um, some non-easement land, and obviously a lot of the non-easement land on one side, and there's a little triangle of non-easement land there in the corner. And in theory, the easement, even if you got rid of that little eas, triangle and expanded your easement, it would be, the easement would still be entirely on one lot, not shared along the boundary per se. I guess I've never looked at that as a lopsided easement, but I would say currently, as this is drawn, it doesn't meet the definition of kept to the common boundary. And that's also if it's proposed as a shared driveway, where if you decided to keep it as a standalone driveway for the new lot, then it wouldn't meet the def, uh, the regulation.
But if we were to get, get rid of that one line, um, that's designated as E-five?
Mm-hmm. Right, and then take.
Would that then meet the definition?
I think it more meets the definition, but you would have to show it on the plan that the new lot also receives its access from that point.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So it, it has to act as a shared driveway.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, and what we would do is then we would, uh, if you're looking down at this portion down by the cemetery, we would eliminate that driveway.
Yeah, that's true.
We would designate that as a common drive and make it very clear that that's where the access is for both lots.
I guess in my opinion, that's more conforming to the regulation. Ideally, we do see, I guess, the equidistant easement on either side of the line, but we're dealing with a existing driveway, existing stone walls. It's the least impactful while still trying to meet the regulation.
Yep.
I guess that's, that's my thoughts on it.
And, I mean, right now it's showing kind of where the driveway is, but the, the driveway easement could be shown, encapsulating that to capture.
Yeah, just closing that triangle essentially.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, as long, uh, uh, hopefully, I hope that'll give you your two-hundred, two-hundred feet, um, and then the, the other piece, I think that's, uh, so you're thirty, thirty thousand, um, do you know what the, so usually there would be a contiguous area on the, uh, on the remaining parcel, is there thirty thousand square feet contiguous upwind in that side as well?
Yeah.
Thirty thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty is shown on parcel A.
Yeah, for parcel B, though. There's no, um.
For the, the parent parcel?
The, the current parent parcel, yeah.
No, there isn't, but it's more than.
Yeah, obviously, I know that the house right now is, you know, with, outside the setbacks, but you're not proposing changing the house, but we would still wanna see that there's still, we're not creating a, a knock-forming lot, a more knock-forming lot, um, say that this didn't have thirty thousand square feet of area now, based on the proposed lines, so usually we'd, we'd see that, that area shown to make sure that, that the lot does still meet the, uh, the standards.
Well, I, I can tell you that when we did the, uh, state subdivision plan, we had to show what the buildable area were, so that would be parcel B.
Yep.
This one here, and the total buildable that meets the state regulations, which also mirrors what you have, is, uh, ninety-three thousand six hundred square feet. And that's, that's in the upper part here, the calculation here. This subtracting well radius, steep slopes, ledge.
So under our definition, it could, in theory, be more, more than that. Because we don't require the subtraction of well radius.
No, that's correct.
I guess I want to circle back. Is everybody kind of in agreement as to like the, the modification to that easement meeting the zoning regulation regarding shared driveway?
The way I read the, the access piece of it in the subregs is, is a, if there are individual driveways, then we'd. The way I read the, the access piece of it in the subregs is, is a, if there are individual driveways, then we'd have a problem with frontage, but if we require a shared driveway, um, I believe that does not create that, that, um, that issue.
Okay.
In the well radius placement, that's actually in our subregs, not our zoning reg, so I think if we want to be clean on this, that could be a waiver if, if there's no way to get that whole radius within the parent parcel. Again, the part that's off onto the road, I, I think we've usually left, because it's current, the current lot, but the part that we would be creating more non-conforming would be the, uh, where the lot, the new lot line would go. If it would cut, cut off a piece of that. So that we could do by, uh, by a waiver.
Is that in the subdivision?
Yeah, nineteen point three. It's easier to search the documents, the PDF documents on the computer than it is paper ones.
I have two small comments just regarding the boundary. I just wanted to, this is just regarding the, the pins to be set.
Sure.
Um, I want to make, they're shown per the legend, it looks like, uh, that they'd be an iron rod. Per the regulation, they have to be granite unless there, there's a waiver requested. Um, so the, the two that are currently shown, the one at the, the rear of the property and the one at the front, either a waiver request to use iron needs to be submitted, or they need to be called, shown as granite bounds, and then that lot line, will need an intermediate bound, just because our, where we can't go three hundred feet. We have a requirement that every three hundred feet, there's a monument on a new lot line.
With a granite bound?
Um, in the past, it seems like most people show like an iron pin for the-
Well, is that allowed for the intermediate?
I think sometimes we catch it, sometimes we don't, um-
I'm just asking, because I, I can change, I can change, as to notice on, on the plan.
At the, uh, uh, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but the, so the monumentation on point A is granite bounds shall be set at property line corners and angles, and at all points of curvature and points of tangency. Should be, shall be placed not more than three hundred feet apart in any straight line. So if, since this is a straight line-
So the intermediate could be a, could be a-
Could be a, iron pipe, okay.
So granite in the front and rear.
Not, not more than three hundred feet, because it's five hundred and thirty-two, so somewhere halfway.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes people choose based on the topography, so you can see one from the other, or just toss it right in the-
Sure, makes sense, yeah.
And then my only other comment was the, um, the contiguous area, but we can kind of derive it from that buildable area, so I think I'm okay there.
Yeah, because the calculation is there, I mean-
Yep.
And no, no wetlands on premise?
No.
All right, um, is there any further discussion on the board before I, uh, that it's a public hearing, so I want to make sure I get to any butter testimony? So this is the point in time where we would welcome any butter testimony, uh, anybody speaking for the application, please come forward first, and then if you have, if you're speaking against, or have just general questions, uh, please come up after. And again, identify yourself and, um, drop everything towards us. See none? All right, I will close the, uh, close that public hearing. So at, at this point, I think we have, um, you know, there's a few things that we want to see revised plans on before, any kind of final action on the, on the plan. I think a continuance would be in order just to get the, the revised, uh, pieces and then go from there.
All right.
Is, is there any date, so normally, uh, so we meet second, fourth, Wednesday of every month. Our next meeting is June twenty-fourth, but we would have deliverables a week ahead of time, so I don't know if that's, that's obviously not, about a week from now, that the deliveries will, would be due.
A week from now for the, for the revised changes on the plan?
Or we could move to the, the first meeting in July, which as far as I know, is open. Okay, sorry, I'm looking at Mr. Lemieux, I guess, uh, would be July thirteenth, with deliverables around July sixth.
I, I think, I think the plans can be corrected and, and I can send it in, can I send it in electronically, or is that to be paper?
Nope.
Electronically?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, so looking at the, uh, June twenty-second?
Twenty-second?
Me, I got the right date, right?
I think you said twenty-fourth.
I thought it was twenty-fourth.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I heard twenty-four somewhere.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment, Priest Road, I believe, is a scenic road.
So, I, I checked on that as well. And our regs do not have map twenty on there. It has map nineteen, uh-
Split, I know that.
Yeah, let me pull it up real quick. I thought the same thing, and, you know, I, I didn't know what the history was behind this, but-
Is this the paved portions, the Priest Road?
Yes, it is, paved portion.
Oh, it is paved.
Yeah, it is on the paved portion, yeah.
Yeah, Priest Road fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-four are the, according to regs, are the scenic road sections.
So the area that's paved in between is not?
It does not say map twenty, which this lot is on. I, I didn't know what the distinction was, you know, not knowing the town as well as you guys, but I guess that would be it then.
I believe that's correct, I believe that, and that's why the section's paved, and the other sections aren't.
Want to check on that?
Yeah, nothing in between, then we can definitely confirm, and if, so the biggest thing was if it's, if it is a scenic road, we would just have to make sure that we post the public hearing, which we can do for the continuance, that it's a scenic road. It's part of our regulations that we, uh, notify it correctly.
But I, I did check that, because I saw that on the, on the checklist. And then I looked it up, and it didn't have this tax map on it.
I mean, I don't believe this section is, and I believe that's, that's the easiest way to differentiate, is it, is it the paved section or not?
Right, and who's in charge of that, who would know that answer definitively?
I mean, I'm going by our own subdivision regs, the appendix two, designated scenic roads, and Priest Road is, like you mentioned, Nottingham tax map fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-four.
It's also in the master plan.
Okay.
So we can double check those.
Definitive answer?
I-
I'd go from my table.
I didn't know if there was-
We'd have to go back to the Warren Argo, and see.
Is that what it is, a Warren Argo?
Yeah.
One time, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would say it's not, right?
I, correct. If, if I determine anything in between now and next Wednesday, I will make sure that it gets communicated to Mr. Lemieux, that we get it posted on the continued agenda, uh, as a scenic road.
Okay, can, can I run down what I need to change on the plan real quick?
Yep.
We're going to eliminate, uh, E five, the designation that on the easement, we're going to eliminate the, uh, the proposed driveway. We're going to make that into a shared drive.
And can you make sure that's just labeled, label that as the, so people know that that's the common?
Share drive, common drive, yeah, yeah. Under, uh, sub nineteen three, well radius waiver, I've got to submit one of those, correct?
Yeah, unless the, uh, when you jog the lot lines, for some reason that fits, but-
Yeah, I'm not going to change the lot lines now, because if I change the lot lines now, I've got to go back to the state, I don't want to do that.
Waiver it is.
Um, then I'm going to correct the, um, designation of iron pipes and put granite bounds, and also show an intermediate iron pipe, um, not more than three hundred feet, um, from either boundary. And then I'm going to add lot calculation for tax map twenty lot six, parent tract. They got it all?
Um, what, well, uh, the four K area should include this.
Oh, yeah, four K areas, correct, yep.
Thanks, Ray. All right, um-
And then, when, when you add those lot, the contiguous area calcs, sometimes we like to see, even though something like this existing house would be in the front setback, we sometimes like to show what the setbacks are.
Setbacks on the parent tract.
It just happens to be a non-conforming, which doesn't mean anything, but just, just to show the setback lines, that'd be nice. I think that's all I got on my list.
Yep. All right. All right. So the mo, motion to continue to six twenty-two at seven P M. would be, uh, in order, with deliverables by six fifteen.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue case number twenty-two dash zero zero six dash S U B to June twenty-second, uh, two thousand twenty-two at, at seven P M.
For a second? Motion by Ms. Mooney and a second by Mr. Davies, any further discussion? Halls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries six zero, thank you very much, Mr. Stewart, we'll see you-
Thank you for your time.
In two weeks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, um, is case number twenty-two dash zero zero seven dash S I T., an application from David Beatty, uh, and I apologize if I mispronounced the name, of BSC Group, representing Concrete Products of London area, requesting approval to build a precast concrete manufacturing facility, property located at one sixty Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as tax map three, lot two dash two. And I am in a butter to the case, so I am going to, uh, recuse myself and hand over, uh, chair duties to Mr. McKinnon. How are you doing?
Good.
Ian, do you want to seek somebody, that's an alternate for hearing this case?
Sandra.
Yeah, we can, so, we can see Sandra for, um, for head's position.
Okay.
For this case only. All right. Do you want to just give us a little, a little intro, and then, uh, we'll bring it back to staff for their reviews?
I'm David Beati, um, project manager with BSC Group, uh, and I'm here with Greg Stratus, president of-
Shea Concrete Products, Greg Stratus, Shea Concrete Products.
So we're back, uh, again with, um, a more complete plan set, site plan set, um, which we'd like to go through if possible tonight. As you know, Shea is anticipating, uh, uh, proposing in addition to the current structure at, uh, one sixty Old Turnpike Road. A bit of an antiquated sort of, uh, production facility at this point. They have, uh, experienced a, a very large increase in demand, uh, which they're trying to keep up with. And as such, they're proposing a twenty-two thousand two hundred and fifty square foot, um, manufacturing facility, which is located right here and shown right here in, in a magenta color. Uh, we're also proposing to surround the facility with a concrete apron, uh, which we will need a variance for with regard to, uh, setback on it. We are before the docket, uh, on the, on the ZBA, uh, towards the end of the month for that, as well as one other waiver, which is the building height. Uh, we've received some very positive feedback so far from, uh, Nottingham and the fire chief, building inspector, with respect to these two minor requests. Other than that, I could go through the entire, uh, layout here if you'd like, um, or we could, uh-
I'll bring it back to Blair, and then, yeah, if there's anything more detail that you want to jump into after that.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Blair, do you mind going through your, um, staff report? In terms of completeness?
Also, just to be clear, as it was presented, there were no waiver requests, there were our, there are variances though.
Variants, yeah.
Those will be before, before the appeals. It does appear, uh, that there'll be more than thirty thousand square feet of disturbance, which, um, per our site plan regs, requires a stormwater management plan. Um, the applicant has not asked for a waiver for this and has not met the regulation. I do note that plan sheets two hundred and two oh one are both titled existing conditions plan, but they're clearly construction details, so that's a small item. But as regards the parking, um, there's a bit of confusion between our, our regulations. The zoning ordinance states that, um, adequate parking for employees and patrons, I believe, is something to be affected, the quote, and what's noted in their plan. However, the site plan review regs have minimums for manufacturing and office. And the site plan review regs also state that no parking is going to be in the setback. So I don't know if this is, how, how this is handled, um, uh, in terms of like what they're meeting and, and you know, is it, is the application complete at that point? Yeah, and then, then the last two are just more comments on this, on the site as a, from a design perspective, which I can, I can get into later, I know that's we're not really at the point we're at right now. Um, and the only other thing that I would point out is, as far as I could tell, I did not see a surveyor stamp on the plan that were submitted, that would tell us that what we're reviewing is in fact what's in the field.
Yeah, that was, that was one thing I noted.
So, um, typically, not just BSC Group, you actually have a name on a licensed surveyor, whether it's from BSC or a subconsultant, but somebody's name on a plant, stamping. Taking ownership of the existing conditions of what's out there.
Okay. I think, and then I think in terms of, when I was looking at this from completeness, I didn't see, is, was there a checklist? I don't know if it was just not in mine, was there a checklist for anything, I mean, we don't really have a subdivision, a site plan checklist, is that why? As part of the application?
I didn't see a checklist with the-
Yeah, I don't think we have one specific to site plan, some people have been like crossing out the subdivision and writing-
I just want to make sure.
We've talked about that, um-
It's on our list, yeah.
Yeah, it's a-
Okay.
It's a helpful thing to have, but it's, there's nothing specific to the site plan. Something that we need to get on top of, yeah, yeah.
Was there in a butter list, because I don't, I don't, I didn't see the butter list in my packet. Were the butters notified?
There was. May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, with, with respect to a couple of the items that you mentioned, Blair, uh, so we do have a stormwater report, two hundred and eighty-four pages, that we're ready to submit, we wanted to just sort of feel our way through this sort of second review, uh, to see, you know, whether there's going to be any major changes to it or not.
Mm-hmm.
It's ready to go. There is a surveyor stamp on the ZBA plan, uh, we just didn't, uh, adhere to this plan set just yet. And with respect to parking in the setback, do you, are you referring to the concrete apron?
No, down here.
Oh, right down there, okay. Uh, well, that could, that could certainly be adjusted.
Yeah, that could be moved. Didn't seem like a, I wasn't making a big mistake about that, it was actually almost just talking about our conflict in a regs, that's-
Sure.
That looks to be something to be easily moved.
Pretty arbitrary.
Yes. So I wasn't hanging my hat with it.
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody have any thoughts as to completeness, or want to make a motion? I think some of the, I guess my feeling is some of the stuff, like the stamp and some of that, we can handle as part of that, the ongoing review, I would say.
If, if you feel like you have enough before you to be able to continue reviewing it, and that it's not insurmountable for the applicant, it does not appear to be, in my opinion, I mean, yeah, some of these things I would like to see, you know, but they could be conditions.
Yeah, and I have a number, I have a number of things that are kind of more detail oriented, kind of planned questions, which I expect to be handled once it's accepted, so-
And if the plan is, if the, if the application is continued, perhaps that's something that they need to come back with next meeting, in order for us to continue.
I feel comfortable on having Blair look on the stormwater report, because that's in a very sensitive area. It's a little river watershed, which surrounds maybe, um, two, almost half of the property, to the back and to the east.
So to that point, though, that's, that was one of the things I was going to, I don't know if this occurred now before the acceptance, is I don't know if, generally, the stormwater report would be looked at by our town review engineer, the CMA. Um, so they, in the past, depending, it kind of depends on the scale of the project, um, what's reviewed, so if there was interest in the stormwater report being reviewed, uh, especially at two hundred and eighty-four pages, that's a good sized one, so, um, that would need to be done by, that would essentially be a peer review from CMA, which we can ask for, but, um-
I have a snapshot of it right here, the first sixteen pages, which is-
I'd love to look at it, but-
Yeah, I would, I'd be happy to.
Alternatively, if the board's willing, I guess I can dig into it, but-
I, I mean- And essentially, I'm sorry, I can't do this.
Yeah, that's why, it's kind of out of, I guess, Blair's expertise, I think.
It's, essentially, it stipulates that we're, uh, we're reducing, uh, runoff in the five, ten, twenty-five, and fifty-year events, uh, with, with the BMPs that we have proposed.
So I think it's a pretty good, I think it's a pretty good drainage plan, a pretty good stormwater plan, in a nutshell, obviously.
So I, I think we can discuss that af, how we want to handle that after, if we make a motion on acceptance. I had some thoughts on it as well.
And also the Lamprey River Advisory Committee as well.
You want to see that? Okay.
Kind of move it in that direction.
Well, maybe, um, do we want to have a motion on acceptance before, and then we kind of, I imagine several of us will have comments on stuff, so.
Mr. Advisory Committee, move that we accept case number twenty-two dash zero zero seven dash S I T as complete?
I second that.
All right, first by Ms. Mooney. I'll take a vote, everybody in favor of acceptance?
Aye.
Aye, six, six nothing. All right, so I'll bring it back, is there?
Nope, regional impact.
Yeah, we always forget that. Never want to make a motion for...
If I'm getting good at reminding.
It used to be my job.
I'll make a motion that we, that case two-two zero zero seven S I T is of regional impact.
Is of, is of regional impact, okay.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on that?
So I think going back to the, as Ms. Mooney stated, a large wetland impact, that, that, my understanding is that then flows into, eventually into the Lamprey River, so that's one, and the second one would be due to the expansion size of the, the plant, the traffic impact that could occur.
I may, with respect to the traffic increase, currently there are two to four truckloads of materials that are delivered to this site on a daily basis. With the addition of this, this new, this new addition, we don't anticipate there'd be more, being more than eight truckloads, eight to ten perhaps, per day. The retail number of trips is estimated at two to three trips, two to three customers per week here at this facility, very, very quiet. We anticipate a very, very insignificant amount of traffic increase, and therefore, we didn't do any, any type of revisions to the entrance, the ingress, so.
I guess my thoughts on the traffic too are, I guess really DOT has jurisdiction over that, which, but I, I see what you're saying about the Lamprey River there, watershed. Is there, so there's a desire to send it for regional impact, you want to focus on the Lamprey River aspect of it? Okay.
It's Little River, which is part of Lamprey River action. Have you voted yet?
No, we haven't voted yet.
So with that, I'll take a vote, so those in favor of voting this as, as being a regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
We'll do, we'll do six zero on that. All right, now we'll bring it back, so we'll, we'll work that out with Kevin, it's essentially just going to be sending it out to some of the neighboring communities. Sometimes their planner looks at it, they'll send back if they don't feel it has any impact, they'll get back to us if it does, and then we'll touch base with you if it require, if they request you to come to the board or something like that. But generally, it's just between us and that town. All right, now I'll bring it back, is there anything, I guess more detail that you'd like to dive in on the plans?
Sure, I mean.
Do you have note?
So again, it's very, very minor, we're going to alter the, the end of the driveway in a very minor fashion, just to, I believe you can keep a twenty-four foot wide pavement area, however, there's no plans for any pavement, any additional impervious surface, other than what you see up here. We do have a location over here, picked out in orange, where the fire cisterns would be placed four seventy-five hundred gallon tanks, total thirty thousand gallons, and we are working with Kevin and the chief on conforming to their wishes with respect to fire suppression. There's a, an approximate leach, leach field location up here, which is in design right now. This area right here is going to continue as a gravel lot, most of the entire facility is a gravel lot, which is critical to the storage of these precast units that do come out of manufacturing. This here is the existing facility, as you probably are aware, with a concrete pad around it. You can see in blue here, the edge of the wetlands that have been located and delineated, and this green line here is the hundred foot buffer from the edge of the wetlands, and we do not anticipate any encroachment in that buffer zone whatsoever.
Can I, can I step in real quick? I'm sorry. If we do vote as a D R I, is that, do we need to put the meeting on hold to get?
That's what I was wondering.
To get feedback from surrounding communities first? Apologize, I don't have the book in front of me.
I do.
I can see that, jealous.
I'll wait for Ms. Anderson to find that section. I would assume that we can't open the public hearing for sure, it's not a public meeting.
So if we did conform to all the stormwater regulations from the Hampshire D E S, reduced stormwater flow between pre and post, met all the criteria for water quality, volume, suspended solids, et cetera, et cetera, would we need, still need to wait until such time as this regional review gets undertaken? Because I can submit this entire package to you and, by email, or deliver it tomorrow. We are actually making conditions better now, better proposed than they are now.
Well, I mean, you are cutting into, you know, large swaths of, you know, forested area, so, and we don't have it in front of us right now. I think it's got to go through, it's been voted on, I think it's got to go through the process.
And I think it's a general concern, being in the Little River watershed, which ended up going to the Lamprey River Advisory Committee.
Yeah, there is an existing SWIP on file with respect to the existing facility. And we're, we're concerned with it as well, and this is why we've proposed this facility where we have, and we've proposed some amazing measures, I don't know if you've gotten to the drainage plan, with about twelve manholes in there, with, you know, trenches and, and, and manholes and oil water separators, et cetera, et cetera, to, to really, you know, just not allow anything adverse to this, this body of water. And it's in there, and it's, it took a considerable amount of work for our guys to do that.
It's unclear.
Unclear?
We do have to notify them.
Correct.
Within five days.
I guess I'd be curious on how this, the last development of regional impact that we had was, I think about a trust project. Which is a while ago.
Thirty-six fifty-seven, which.
It was a development of regional impact, but I don't recall if it was, how the meeting was handled, and we don't have it spelled out in our bylaws.
Well, we, we reference RSA, and that's what we're reading there.
Yeah.
But I thought in the past we had, because...
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not clear, just one of the things it does say, we have to furnish the minutes.
Sure.
And the plans.
Of the meeting, so.
I guess that was my original intention, I, I think, I guess my original thought that was, that everything gets forwarded to them, but I don't think we would ever be able to take any final action on anything until obviously that process is carried out.
Precise, I mean, the, the meeting has to be continued. We can allow applicant to make a presentation, we could, I guess, if we interpreted that the, the endpoint would be before you open public hearing, as you alluded to, we could do, you know, discussion here, board and applicant, and before you open the public hearing, it has to go.
I'd say that's a safer way to do it.
Yeah. I mean, there is some value right now, I mean, they're here, we're here, considering an application, getting some questions, maybe giving them some feedback, so they can make some changes.
I agree.
Before, you know, opening it up to the public, to take all the testimony.
Well, also where it's a little unclear, I'd rather protect ourselves and not get to that opening of the public hearing component.
Yeah.
If, if it's a little unclear, maybe we can get some clarity for it.
Because essentially, yeah, right, so, because essentially, one of the key pieces of this is that a D R I essentially grants people that are not in Nottingham a butter status. So they have a right to be notified, and a right to appear here by having that notification, be it directly, like a mailer, or through some kind of public notice, that's put in their town, in their public notification venues. So I guess, yeah, that would seem to be the case.
So again, if we, if we demonstrate that there's negative impact, pre, post versus pre, do they need to be part of the process? Negative impact, decrease in, in, in impact to the, to this?
I don't know what there, what there is in the way of a mechanism to challenge a D R I decision, I actually don't.
No, I, I just don't know why we're going and looking for a, a decision from them if we're, if we're, if we're stating emphatically that we are reducing events that are going to advert, that are, that are going to impact that, that body of water, or the buffer zone, or anything. That's what I'm.
No, I understand, but I think.
You know, I mean, once we, once we open it up and we suggest that they get involved in the process, then they're involved in the process. And I, and I, believe me, if we, if we were, if this was a mall parking lot with six hundred spaces and a whole bunch of increase in impervious besides this building, I could, I could certainly understand that. I'd want to know where every drop of water and every pollutant load was going, and how it was being treated, but I think in this particular case, if we inside here can look at this and realize that this is a really tight stormwater analysis report and design, then I, I just would obviously like to be heard tonight, that's, I guess where I'm.
So I think, and I think part of the, I think Ms. Mooney was the original one to make a motion, or I believe you made the motion that it was, and I think part of the concern there is just the overall impact to the watershed, I mean, if you get down to the nuts and bolts of the stormwater, I looked at the tables briefly, and you can see there's a decrease in peak flow, which then usually equates to improvements in stormwater quality and runoff quality, but I know for some of us, we haven't, hadn't seen that until tonight, so I think some of the concern had been lingering there, that it was just the overall impact within the watershed. I think, and I think the way, I think we can do this tonight is, I think we, the vote was taken to move it to D R I, generally, in the past, that'll get pushed to the planning department or town administrator, so we, we can look back, we did that for a re, site plan a little while, last year. Generally, sometimes the town planners will just take a look, and generally it's a letter back to the board, being where it is, there's obviously some towns that are not going to have an issue. But I do think it'd be safer tonight if we continue maybe with some back and forth with the applicant, I mean, the board and the applicant, but not open the public hearing tonight. I am curious to get a little bit more clarity on that RSA, we might need to jot down, change, amend our bylaws again, just to help us in the future, so we're not hunting for it. Is everybody in agreement that we keep it before the public hearing is open, we keep that essentially unopened?
I, I think that we should offer it to other communities, for them to have an opportunity to look at this application as a courtesy, because we share the watershed with them.
Sure.
And to say that you have presented a case in which you've reduced the impact, you have to recognize the fact that you're the applicant, and it would be good to have another pair of eyes take a look.
Understood.
But thank you.
So I think the most beneficial thing to then is we'll just, I think some of us have comments, we'll just try and, maybe try and sort out some of the details, and then that will probably be the most productive thing for the continued date. So I think, was there anything else you wanted to add on the design? If not, I think I'll, Blair had a couple other things just to mention, I know some of us have comments, so Blair, did you want to touch upon just last two bullet points on your memo?
Yeah, real quickly, the, oh yeah, going back to an original discussion topic, what is the increase in truck traffic and passenger vehicle traffic? And would, would this require you to, will this proposed new building require you to revise whatever existing state permit you have with DOT for access off of Route Four?
I don't think with that, with those numbers, I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But we'll certainly, I'm sorry, we'll certainly, obviously, look into it, you know.
Okay. And then finally, what, you know, for a facility like this, we want to see a lighting plan, you know, both, both site and building, not interior building, building exterior, but if you have something that's a standing pole for, you know, short areas, we do want to see that, we want to see the illumination numbers as well.
We do have lighting regulations in the code, generally just dark sky compliant. No, no typical floodlights for new fixtures.
Also, I don't know if anyone else was going to mention it, but we did receive fire department, I don't know, those, I want to make sure that, here we go. I'll forward it to you, but I'll read the highlights.
I think we got it.
You got it?
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay, great, all right, so.
It's about twelve, twelve or thirteen points?
Uh, yeah.
Chief?
Nine, but.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
This is the March, March review letter?
Yeah, March nineteenth?
Yep.
Yes. Yeah, March nineteenth, Shay Concrete, BSC Group, so yeah, he had nine comments, so, some were, as usual, some were very simple, but there are some concerns about the cistern, and so you'll have to work that out, and that may have to become a, that may have to be conditions for us to deal with.
If it hasn't been sorted out by then, yeah.
Right, if it hasn't been sorted out, but yes.
Yep.
So that was it for me.
I guess to that point, I don't know who has comments or who doesn't, but it might be easiest for most to volunteer first, or we can go around. I think the goal here is to get as many comments out there that might have to do with design, or questions about information that maybe you're not gathering from the plans, that I think they can incorporate in a resubmital back to us for the next meeting, or the next meeting that we continue to. that I think, um, they can incorporate in a resubmital back to us for the next meeting or the next meeting that we continue to. Anybody wanna?
Well, I think, did you have more that you wanted to explain about the project?
No, I think it's, uh, I don't wanna say it's a simple one, but I think it's, we try to simplify it, um, at least in its presentation here, uh, at this point, uh, we do have some screening that we proposed between the number one sixty-four and, uh, the north side of the building, uh, there's also, uh, a bit of regrading that creates a bit of a ten to, ten to eleven foot natural berm back there that will add to, to the screening between, uh, this facility and, uh, the homeowners at one sixty-four. Unless Greg has anything that he learned.
I, I think when, um, Shay Concrete Creek came to the planning board, um, several years ago, when you were doing some improvements, you also indicated where the salt, where the snow pile would be set back from the wetland, um, runoff.
Snow storage area, we haven't.
Yes.
We haven't, we're kind of feeling our way around as to, you know, the final design and the final placement here. And, and from here, we will go, as soon as we talk with the chief regarding fire cisterns in that location, we're probably gonna have it somewhere in that gravelled area there. So, it's going to be certainly well in, uh, well beyond a hundred plus feet from the, from the wetlands.
I thought you showed it in two places.
I know that it's been suggested a couple of times.
I thought you showed it. In this area, and.
Unless, those are labeled as the existing precast storage areas.
Uh, this is.
Oh, I see where you're, I see where you're, I see where you're talking.
Oh, snow storage.
On, on our conceptual.
Yeah, on those.
We, we suggested maybe a proposed location back then.
Oh, it's right here, on this.
Yeah, V one, V one hundred, is that what you're on, sheet V one hundred in the bottom right corner?
V one hundred, yeah.
So she's referring to, yeah, sheet.
Oh, yeah.
Sheet V one hundred, so, I guess mark it as existing, or if it's gonna be proposed and carried forward, just make sure that it's shown on the proposed site plan as well.
Sure, okay.
The site preparation.
Yeah.
Layout.
The other question I had, you've got twenty-four parking spaces, um, which I think it said you had, uh, it's either, you, you've got twenty-two for cars and two for vans. What about trucks that you're using to move materials, I would imagine trucks are, some trucks would be staying there for a period of time, but they're.
I mean, the, we don't have official parking spots for the trucks, for the be- equipment that moves the material, um, just parks and storage area where the, but we could designate an area for it, that'd be fine. It's a gravel yard that we just, you know, where there's an opening in the storage areas where we park those vehicles.
But I think that's probably another concern for like safety for the fire department, police department, to know kind of where those would be set, so.
We can pick an area for that, that's fine, for yacht equipment and delivery trucks.
And, and then just so I'm understanding correctly, so it looks like you're gonna be pretty much clearing what's now wooded for that building and you're gonna be clearing right up to the property line of one sixty-four, is that, and then building a beam and putting berm and putting plantings in, is that the plan?
For the beam, uh, the berm, excuse me, is, um, i- i- it's a natural, uh, it's a, it's a natural feature. It's, it's not something that would be constructing, it's going to be actually graded down, uh, fr- from the, from the existing grade at that rear lot, or that rear line, that northern line down to the concrete pad, um, but it does sort of create a little bit of a, sort of a visual screening, you know, eight to ten to eleven feet. Different between bottom and top, I guess.
I think the, the only other thing I, that I, that, uh, not the only other thing, but one of the things that I'm really struggling with is, um, envisioning, right? What, what forty feet means, um, and what a ninety by two hundred and fifty footprint means. And I'm just wondering if we should, like, do a site walk, I know you've got existing buildings there, like, kinda see, like, alright, what does this look, what, what, like, what could this look like, or where, how far into the, you know, woods, I'm just, I'm really like, I'm trying to put a.
Sure.
Picture to it, and I'm just wondering if we should do a site walk at some point in time to kinda help understand the impact, um, and what forty feet, you know, forty or four, it's forty, right, not forty one?
Forty feet of height.
Yeah.
So Shay has just come, you know, recently completed one in Amesbury, an addition to an, a, a, an existing building. And it was, the footprint for the addition was about ninety by two fifty, so they've done all the, the engineering and the calculations to warrant that size. They've got a, Greg could describe it a little bit better, uh, than I could, but it's, 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 it's quite a process, uh, where the concrete is, is, is made at one end of the building and it's, uh, it's carried along rails and beams to the designated formed areas, and it's poured right in place, it's all electronic, it's, uh,
Yep.
It's pretty, it's pretty amazing, uh, it cures for the, the necessary time, uh, before it's taken out, uh, and, and stored outside the facility so that it can make room for additional.
Yep.
Uh, additional activities, so, it's, it's an amazing, uh, building, I, I was fortunate enough to walk through it last week. But I think maybe Greg could potentially touch on that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, so the building we have at that facility is similar dimensions, forty foot of height, uh, it's a little wider, but it's, um, the same length, just about, the addition part that we just did. It has some automation in it, so it does make production easier, more efficient, um, but if you wanted a site walk, I'm fine with, no walking around with you.
So that was one of the things on my list, kinda towards the end, is generally trying to schedule it as soon as possible, so it doesn't hold up anything else.
Yeah.
And that, that site walk is open to the public as well, it's a publicly noticed site walk, um, generally we get as many members of the board there, but.
Maybe do it, may need to make sure that we include whomever, uh, with the DRI, so.
Yeah, and that, to that point, that's a perfect way to, as part of that, advertise that, and if staff from those towns want to, and be, show up, public, public is welcome, so, um, that might be something we can throw some dates and times out, uh, when we've gotten through any comments, I think that's a good idea. I did wanna, on your last point though, regarding the buffer, um, that was one thing I had asked, it's, it's kinda just shown as plantings, um, was there more definition as to what kind, was there any, even though, I was looking at the grades, so even though it is a cut, you know, that you're cutting down, there is still a decent amount of building showing, so was there any thought to, you know, in the grand scheme, showing, uh, constructing a fence along that property line, there's still going to be some building height, but it provides, um, I don't know how tight these plantings are in vision, but, I mean, obviously you need quite a bit of width to to, a, a completely non-seethrough buffer, but sometimes a fence helps, so you don't have to plant as much, but it provides a year-round.
It was only a, an initial suggestion, you know.
Okay.
Um, to at least start the, start the process of, of discussing it, but I think.
But a fence, I mean, a fence is fine.
A fence would be fine.
I th- I think it'd be, yeah, maybe think about it, and if so, feel free to put that, I think it'd be in a, it's a way to ensure a year-round.
Mm-hmm.
Um, buffer of some kind than just, um, you know, some tree space, I think trees are great to have in there, so twenty years from now, there's, maybe you can't see the building whatsoever, but, um, okay. Any comments?
Same thing.
Okay. Sue, did you have anything else you wanted to touch upon, um, comment wise?
Uh, no, just looking at my calendar.
Okay, I'll go last, I think over here.
Almost it.
Okay. Um, so I had a number of things, I'll try and rifle through these and if there's any more questions, um, I guess before I go through them though, as I mentioned, uh, you brought up review of the stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
If there's a desire to have that reviewed, we have for subdivisions we've had, uh, and other site plans we've had, uh, it's up to the board to decide if we feel peer review, um, is needed, if it's outside of our, um, expertise, or if somebody on the board doesn't wanna look at it. I guess if we feel that we can handle the plans ourselves, um, we have Blair that's helped us review against some of the code, they're going through some variances. If the board's comfortable with it, I'd be willing to review the drainage report on behalf of the board, um, but that's up to you guys, um, if you wanna involve CMA, it's, it's up to us.
Well, if you're comfortable doing that and you feel so you can get an adequate picture.
Yeah, and I, I did, I scanned through this and it's presented in a clear and concise manner, so I can basically recreate everything if I needed to, so. Uh, I just wanted to touch upon that, 'cause if so, then, um, you know, they dive into the plans, but I think Blair did a pretty good review of the plan, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ian, but I would like, like, I would like, you know, a review and then a written report from an outside.
And that's fine, yeah, that's why I wanted to throw it out there, I mean, that's, it's up to the board, it's, it's up to the board for that.
Appreciate you offering and stuff, but, yeah, I think I would re- I did, I would feel more comfortable.
Yep.
Um, and, and I would wanna see kind of the results of that review, um.
And I would say that the scale of this building and the amount of, it, it, because it exceeds, probably well exceeds the thirty thousand square feet.
Mm-hmm.
I think that makes sense, so, um, and you said, so you have a stormwater report that's complete, so there's no need for the waiver from the stormwater management requirements, so.
Yes. Right.
I guess, when we talk about site walk, we'll just make some internal votes on review and site walk, um, when we get towards the end of this, since we're not gonna open the public hearing. But if you don't mind, if you wanna draw, I'm just gonna rifle through stuff, if you want me to elaborate, um, I was just gonna say, uh, there's, needs to be a planning board signature block, just for all of us to eventually sign on the final plans. As Blair pointed out, um, I was just looking at, uh, the existing conditions plan is, um, eventually we'll need a survey certification, which sounds like there is one on potentially a more recent plan, and on some of that, was just making sure there's enough notes to cover, boundary certification, typical, you know, datum, stuff like that, just to certify the boundary, whatever the survey requires, and then I did, it looks like the information is kind of shown on there, some of the test pits.
Yes.
It was hard to read, I don't know, maybe it's just this sheet and the scale, um, I guess the.
Yeah, some of the, some of the, uh, some of the, it seems like the pen styles might have been a little bit off.
Yeah, if you could take a look at that, I'd be curious, um, this one, I always like to take a look and see, I'm curious what those test pits are, um, primarily looking for seasonal high water tables, but. And then, um, now I'm on to sheet C one oh one, so the layout, materials plan, kind of the site plan, um, this kinda went to the, I had the question on the parking as well, so, um, I know there's office space, so per our regulation, that's counted as one per three hundred and twenty-five square feet. Sometimes these uses, it's, the parking is based on demand, right, 'cause you don't expect people to pull in, see the displays out front and say, I wanna buy one of those, that doesn't really happen, so.
Kind of pick up precast and drive away with it.
Somebody would probably try and put it in their pickup truck, but, um, just, the twenty-four spaces are shown, I think all twenty-four, yeah, all twenty-four are shown on that, I guess the southeast side of the site, south side of the plan, um, we are, you called out two ADA spaces, which I assumed would need to be, I guess, per ADA, need to be the shortest distance from, I guess, assuming that somebody like that, somebody would be working in the office, or contemplate if you need to show an ADA space, um, somewhere adjacent to the o- office, or near another entrance to the building.
Sure.
Um, just to make sure we're meeting ADA, um, we talked about the buffer, contemplating a fence or beefing up that planting buffer. Fire department, you're working out final comments, and, um, the final plans, I assume, will have a PE stamp on them in regards to site grading, all that. And then I had a question as to, what was the, maybe you noticed me or not, what is the current proposed new disturbance? Is this, is this an AOT permit, or is, have you guys done the calculations to see if you're in that?
So, yeah, we will, we will be looking for one, uh.
Okay.
We're, we're, you know, we could be at eighty-five, ninety thousand, so, we're, we're estimating that we're potentially gonna need one.
Did the existing site require one, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
What's it?
That's why I was thinking of it.
Alter, alteration of terrain.
That was just my question, it's, if, if you hit a hundred thousand square foot threshold that requires an alteration of terrain permit.
Okay.
It kinda looks like the existing site, if you look at the limits of the gravel, would trigger that, granted, there's, there's timelines, if you build stuff at different times, it doesn't trigger it. But with the construction of this, I guess I, I assumed it would, you're probably on the edge, so, maybe some confirmation as to if it will need AOT, and, um, it always gives us peace of mind too, 'cause that has the state review component. I had some, I was looking at the grading plans, um, some of this, some of this I'm gonna skip over, 'cause it might be picked up by the review engineer. You know, I was looking at something, I'm on sheet C one oh two point two, which is the detail grading plan, I'm looking at the level spreader that's shown there on the left side of the plan. Just because that is, that point goes down to the wetland, it'd be good to see just a little bit more detail, whether it's on the plan with grading, or a detail in the detail sheets of what that level spreader looks like, just because that is the last point before discharge goes towards the wetland, which, um, there's some concern, uh, with the proximity of the project too. Some of this other stuff I can kinda go over, um, and then one thing on here was just, I think it's, I didn't look up what the section was, but if there's a benchmark somewhere on the property, it's just one of the, usually the checklist items, make sure there's a benchmark shown. And then lastly, it was kind of a general, I was reviewing some of the details and just making sure we have details regarding everything that we're putting in, you know, drainage trench, concrete cross-section, stuff like that, just so that we know when it goes to construction, the building inspector's essentially signing off on a building permit that the site, we've, we've approved all the site elements, so. That was kinda my quick site plan review, so I guess, in conclusion, um, we're not gonna open the public hearing tonight because we do need to wait to send out the, um, development of regional impact notices, which means that it will, this case will be continued to a, uh, future meeting. As part of that, there's interest in having, um, the review engineer look at the project, um, so I believe what that would be is if the board decides to make a motion to that and vote in the affirmative, um, we would receive a proposal from the review engineer for that, and we'd pass that on to you for that review, um, from CMA, and then, uh, we'll can discuss site walk. So does anybody wanna tackle the review engineer or make a motion in that regards?
Question?
Sure.
So, all things working out here, uh, with respect to what you're looking for and what Nottingham's looking for, et cetera, in, in the process, if, uh, the AOT is successfully reviewed and the review engineering, or the DRI review is, is successful, is there any, any, and, and all, obviously, all of the, the items that you've, uh, you've mentioned here tonight, is there any reason why, uh, planning board wouldn't, uh, maybe essay at the next, next meeting or the next time we're a hundred percent prepared, any reason why you wouldn't vote this, uh, in the affirmative?
With a conditional approval?
We can't speak to that.
Yeah, so it's, it's hard to speak towards.
No, I don't mean tonight, I mean, I'm saying that when we come back and we have, and we have, uh, our waivers and, uh, variances in place from ZBA, and, and all of these items are addressed, uh, is the feeling of the board that we would have satisfied planning here in Nottingham and, and, and this would be a, a successful project?
What I would say is that we do grant conditional approvals, most of our comp- approvals are conditional.
Uh-huh.
Generally, that is based on, I guess, the number of outstanding items, um, so, obviously, we can't, if we've given you this list, there's things that know, i- if we cross off the list and get through it. I guess the board would look, would kind of take that into factor when we look into conditional, but it's really on a case by case basis. But we do, you know, most approvals are conditional, there's conditions we place on it, so. There's the possibility, we don't, we don't hold out. AOTs can be a condition oftentimes with, with local approvals, so. Knowing that that can take a little while to come in, so.
It's just that we can't make a promise.
Yeah, I can't speak to how everybody will vote in the future, yeah.
I don't understand, I mean, you know, it's, it's, again, you know.
I think what's, I think, I think the time, the needing, the meeting at which we bring this back, we'll, obviously, we'll see how much time that leaves, it's going to be trying to ironing out all these details, right, so.
I think the other thing we need to check on too, since this is a regional impact, is you're going before the ZBA next week?
Twenty something.
Twenty first, twenty first is lead.
We have five days to notify the town, for the other towns and with the minutes and stuff, so they'll have that information ahead of time. So I just wanted to, yeah.
So in regards to review engineer for this application?
Yeah, just a question, Ian, so you keep mentioning CMA, is that our engineer company of choice?
Think so, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep, they at least did the la- the last one that we needed, they're, they're on contract with the town, yeah.
Okay, so you need a, a motion?
We're looking for, if, if you're looking for a motion, it'd be a motion for or against peer review.
Okay.
By the town's contracted engineer.
All right, I'll make a motion for peer review by the town's contracted engineer for the stormwater management plan. A second?
Okay. So with that, is there any discussion regarding that? I guess what I'll say to that is, you know, yes, I can review the stormwater, but I know there's some concerns about just the, the size of the application, so I'm okay with sending that to peer review.
Freeze up your evening.
Yeah, when the daughter goes to bed. Okay, so with that, so we have a motion for, to request peer review, so we'll handle that, we'll reach out to CMA.
We need more?
Yeah, so I'll take a vote to send this to peer review for this application. Those in support, say aye. All right, so then I think the last item for tonight before discussing the continuance is interest in a site walk. I'm always a fan of scheduling them now, so we can, don't push things in the future, so.
Do we have to know if the white towns are interested in the site walk?
Well, so we will, we can set the site walk, but now, because we're doing it now, we can, in our notice to the other communities, we can state.
Let us tell them when it is.
We can state that there has been a site walk scheduled for it.
All right.
It's a, it's a public meeting in general, anybody from the public can show up, so, but we can include it in that notice. I don't know if there's any ti- I mean, sometimes we throw times and dates out here just to make it easy for people and not everybody has to attend, but the idea is to try and get as many people as possible that have an interest in attending. Is there any dates that anybody would like to throw out there?
Well, July sixth is the Wednesday prior to our next meeting, on July the thirteenth. And that would give us around the community's time. Together with their board members to see if they wish to.
Wednesday, July sixteenth, July?
No, July sixth.
Wednesday, July sixth.
That's the fourth of July, there might be people who have, take that week off for holiday. So you want to bump it back to the twenty-ninth?
So, and also by saying that too, is essentially the, we would either, that means the application would either be continued to the twenty-fourth and then the site walk would occur after, which would be the tight meeting, probably maybe get some of this stuff back, or the next meeting, the first meeting in July is July thirteenth.
I think we're tentatively scheduled for the next meeting this month.
That's the intent, to come back and try and solidify?
Well, I was, you know.
So shouldn't we do the site walk before then?
We were hopeful that.
Well, we need to.
This is not getting done at the next meeting.
Well, that's, so the, that's.
I understand, yeah, no, I understand.
The peer review is probably going to take some time to come back, if there's, there's nothing to say that you can't come back at the next meeting and talk with us, but.
But I, I think it would be best to get the peer reviews comments before we came back.
Sure.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Might save time for everybody.
Yeah, there's no reason to keep coming back with changes, the peer review's going to have some.
Okay, so is there, is there an interest in just the June, July thirteenth date for?
I mean, I, what's wrong with June twenty-ninth? Are you talking for the next?
For the site walk, for the site walk?
For the next meeting, could that kind of?
Yeah, July thirteenth, I think is good.
Okay, so then the June twenty-ninth.
June twenty ninth, for the site walk?
Site walk.
That's, that's a good turnaround for scheduling?
It allows us to notify properly.
June twenty ninth.
And also gives to.
Pick a time too, or?
Yeah, so generally, obviously we're nicer weather, but it's dependent on people's work schedules. I think generally you do like five or five-thirty, is that, turn with the last?
Well, what else can be needed for the people who are working?
Yeah.
Five-thirty or five?
I would say five-thirty or six o'clock.
Yeah.
Five-thirty, yeah.
Does that work for the applicant as well, five-thirty up?
Yep.
Okay, so that would, um.
The mosquitoes come out at six, I know from personal experience.
Well, mosquitoes will be there, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
My mosquitoes are out at noon.
Yeah.
All right, so Kevin will have to work on a notice for the site walk, June twenty-ninth at five-thirty. Do you generally take a motion on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
What day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, oh wonderful.
Treat it as a continuance to a date and time certain, so the same way you would make the July thirteenth contin- uh, motion, make this one. This is how Jen and, Jen and I were just talking about this.
Okay, good.
So.
So with that then, um.
It's a separate, it's a separate motion.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion for the site walk.
Second motion.
You want to make it?
In how we would never say that again.
Just, I, I forget how you actually phrase a continuance, but just say something like, we are continuing or we're, we're ho- holding a site walk meeting.
Okay, go ahead Sue.
All right, thank you. I move that we conduct a site walk for case number twenty-two dash zero zero seven dash S I T for June twenty-ninth onsite at five-thirty P M.
All right, first by Sue.
So second?
Yeah.
Charlene. All right, I'll take a vote, those in favor of the site walk on the twenty-ninth at five-thirty, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have that. And then I guess next, because we're not opening the public hearing because of the DRI, we do need to now continue this case, which we've discussed is July thirteenth at seven P M.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue case number twenty-two dash zero zero seven dash S I T to July thirteenth at seven P M.
Second?
First and a second, so those in favor of continuing the case till July thirteenth at seven P M, raise aye. Six, nothing. All right, so you have the staff review comments, you have our comments, fire department, got a little bit to work on in the meantime, and we'll see you guys on the twenty-ninth.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jeez, you stepped down, we get a DRI case?
So I'll, I'll take my seat back at the board, Ms. Jones will, will return back to an alternate, so participating but not voting. We'll jump right into the next case for tonight, which is case twenty-two dash zero zero eight dash S I T, application from Kung Food LLC requesting approval for a wedding venue business and restoration of an existing structure, property located at Two Mary Hill Road in Nottingham, Hampshire, and identified as tax map four, lot two dash one. We have someone for the applicant, if you could just identify yourselves and then give us a quick narrative and then we'll act on the application completeness first.
Good evening. My name is Doug McGuire, I'm an engineer with the Dubay Group, we're a civil engineering firm out of the Londonderry area. And I'm here representing the applicant, Kung Food LLC. Bobby Markar is here representing as the owner. And what we're here before you tonight is to discuss a proposed venue at the corner of Mary Hill Road and Old Concord Turnpike, that's New Hampshire Route four. There is an existing building onsite, an existing barn onsite, an existing residence building. We're proposing to remove a portion of the residence building and restore and improve the barn building to become a proposed venue for weddings or other gatherings. That's basically what we're proposing, I'm happy to go through the plans, but I think you want to talk about acceptance first.
Yep, please, thank you. All right, so we have the application before us, Mr. Heaney, I know you were able to do a review of some of this, again, the site plan, so. We have a checklist apparently for that, which we will come up with as a board. Make this a little bit clearer in the future. But in your opinion, was there anything in, in there that would prevent us from accepting the application as complete tonight?
No, at this time, no.
In my opinion, based on what the materials that was, you know, were submitted and I reviewed, there was enough here that anything else can be addressed during the, not the next phase. So if there's a, if there's any, isn't any more discussion on that, a motion would be in order regarding application completeness?
I'll make a motion that we accept case number two-two dash zero zero eight dash S I T as a complete application.
A second?
There's a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Mooney, any further discussion? All of us in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries six zero. All right, and now you can, Mr. McGuire, if you can, you can go ahead and go into a little bit more detail if you'd like.
Great, thank you, yeah. Um, does it, first, before I start, does everyone have a copy of the eleven by seventeen plans?
Yep.
I do have extras if anybody doesn't, okay?
That's why I ask.
Sorry, one more piece, which we can act on now, which would, what's your stuff there? Would be the development of regional impact.
Mr. Chair, I move that on case number twenty-two dash zero zero eight dash S I T is not an application of regional impact.
I'll second that.
Another motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Mr. McKinnon, any, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, because I, I'll be honest, I sit on the fence on this one, whether or not it is a regional impact or not, given the locality to Barrington, the, you know, the number cars that will come in at certain periods of time during this and then less than just potential noise. I'll bring those up for the board to weigh.
And I don't have the abutter list with me, but, oh, I have to do, I'm sorry, I was going to say, was, is Barrington, is the town of Barrington notified at all since, obviously, Mary Hill Road, the beginning of it, very close proximity where this is, is in Barrington, I don't see them as in a butter. If they weren't notified, and that's, and, and that's a concern, I think we could conditional, have a, you know, continuance and then, and then make sure that they do get notified by us so that they at least have a chance to just voice any concerns. And then a second piece of that would be DOT, since the proposal would be on, on Mary Hill Road for that access, not Route four, but it's obviously within, within a very close proximity there too. I don't know if there's anything.
I guess I'd say I'd be in support of, I'm always notifying the town of Barrington, I don't think I'm still in support of development of regional impact due to the size of this and just what it does do. Some of the other towns would have really no interest in it. If there's a way that we can include Barrington as a future abutter notice, or we don't re-notify, are you asking to re-notify entirely or just?
No.
Just, just notify them for the next meeting, because everybody else has been notified.
Correct. They do have a full-time planner.
They do, yeah.
So, no, I feel like whatever consideration, wait, the expedited. And, and, and I believe that, say, say there is a vote on this at this point, which is generally when we hold these votes, if throughout the application process, information comes up that changes opinion, you could, we could hold another vote on that or, or send the prior vote and, and then vote differently. I think that's a common practice, well, not common, but something that is on the table is an option, so. For example, say, the capacity would change drastically to something larger than what's shown here now during this discussion, then I, I think we could have another vote on that at that point. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor of this not having, being a development of regional impact, please say aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed?
I'm on the fence.
So we'll say, we'll say motion carries five one zero. All right, so that's that, now Mr. McGuire.
Thank you. I, I guess I'll start with just the, the visual representation on the front cover. And so just to clarify, you can see that there is like a, a green outline of a tree line. What that's representat- rep- representative, what's that, representing is the existing tree canopy that's there. This is a, a very, very nice property with mature vegetated growth and so what the applicants are doing is maintaining as much of that as possible to keep that natural feature and then supplementing it rather significantly. And, and so the goal is, is because obviously, you know, with nicer weather, there may be an opportunity, if it's a nice day, to have some outside time for a cocktail hour or something along those lines. And obviously, you don't want to do that in the parking lot area. You also don't want to do that right against Route four without proper buffering. So they put a lot of time and care into working with us on creating a supplemental area that'll be a very attractive area that is to be completely buffered from the roadway. It'll be very private feeling for, for that exact purpose. And so the plantings that were chosen by our landscape architect are, one, evergreen so that they provide some year-round buffering, but also can work under the existing tree canopy that's there and kind of supplement that. So you're going to have some nice coverage in that area. Proposing to provide a little bit of hardscape, the applicants are using some of the existing brick that's onsite and some of the existing cobblestone that they're able to take from the existing house and utilize some of that for, for that to kind of authen- authenticate the feel of the, of the venue. The access to the parking area is in a very similar access point that's there today. There is an existing access on, a secondary access on Mary Hill Road that is kind of performs like a loop road connection that loops from Mary Hill Road right out to the Old Concord Turnpike. You can see that on our sheet two of the existing conditions plan. So that area is being proposed to be removed, so we're actually eliminating two curb cuts out of the existing three that are available on this corner lot. And the main reason, as I, as I said, is to supplement that area and provide some green space for the venue. Our proposed access is in very similar location to the existing access off of Mary Hill Road, they'll call it the secondary access point, and we're looking to just, you know, expand that. We did request two different waivers to the board tonight for this application. One was for the use of gravel parking in lieu of paved parking. Our thought was that for this type of venue, we're trying to keep that authentic feel. A paved asphalt parking lot didn't necessarily meld well with that. We thought that it was appropriate to keep that as gravel. Blair did bring up a suggestion of at least doing something at the connection to Mary Hill Road in his review. I, I completely agree with that, I think that's a good suggestion. Have a little apron at least so that any, there won't be any breaking of the edge of the pavement and it'll provide continuity there. So absolutely on board with that. We expanded the parking area to be able to satisfy what we need for the venue. We expanded the parking area to be able to satisfy what we need for the venue. And, and we feel that this is adequate space for the proposed seats that we're gonna be proposing in the, in the venue. We did buffer the parking lot area, you can see that. We buffered that to the rear with additional evergreen plantings to kind of buffer the parking lot. But remember, this isn't gonna be a regular establishment that's being utilized, you know, every day like a shopping plaza. It's more for venue and events. And so they would be scheduled and timely in that way. We did, we, we have a full grading and drainage plan. The, the site is served by well and septic. We're proposing to enlarge the septic. One clarification from, from Blair's review was the nitrate and loading easement that's shown on the property. That is actually an existing nitrate and loading easement. It was, it was, yeah, I know, I should've, I should say existing. And so that was provided as part of the, you know, I guess a previous agreement prior to the applicants purchasing the property. And so, we're using it as, just as that, just to, you know, to allow for the nitrate loading to go off property and utilize that area, so that's shown. The gravel parking lot, it grades very similar to the existing natural grade. We do have an intercept swale at the north side of the parking lot. That's not to collect our stormwater, but rather not create any area of puddling in between the two properties and kind of just direct that out to a sheet flow manner. We're proposing to sheet flow our flow in the same direction it was going currently, which flows from east to west. Our thought was, from a drainage standpoint, we're proposing a true gravel parking area. That's gonna be a well-drained material, structural material similar to what you'd be using for a roadbed material. And so, what that will hopefully allow for is that natural runoff to just kind of go right into the, to that base and be absorbed in that way. We didn't concentrate the flows in any areas except for the area, as I said, that's coming offsite. So everything else would be kind of sheet flow and go into the grass area. So for that reason, we were requesting relief of having to do a more detailed drainage study, just because we were assuming the board is comfortable with the gravel option. I think, I think it does make sense that maybe a more detailed study wouldn't be warranted because of the gravel nature of the parking. And also, keep in mind, we're eliminating a significant portion of gravel in the front of the property as it, you know, that, that loop road is all gonna be eliminated and that's gonna be loaned and ceded for the majority of that. Some of it is offset by some of the hardscape being proposed, but I think we do have a net reduction, at least in that portion of the property. And we have an erosion control plan, pretty standard on that. And then, as you, as I alluded to, we have a pretty robust landscape plan. Really focusing on beautification of the entrance and the experience as you come in. And then, and then that heavy buffering and creating that environment for the venue in the front of the property. Obviously, the benefit of putting that portion in the front is that you're buffering from a sound standpoint from the abutting neighborhood by the building. So that's obviously a positive. You know, being that, that that area is closer to the New Hampshire Route four. You can see the evergreen plantings that we're proposing along the border of the northern parking lot. Our sheet eight just details our landscaping details in our notes. You can see, got, got a lot of numbers on there. A lot of plants, a lot of, a lot of shrubs and, and trees and evergreen trees, large trees, small trees, perennials. So, and that's just, that's just something that the applicants wanted to do, just to add, add value to the venue. We did do a lighting plan on sheet nine, just pretty basic, some, some pole-mounted lights. These are full cutoff, dark sky compliant lighting, just to light the parking lot area. There will be some lighting within the, the venue, call it the venue area, but that would all be landscape-related lighting, nothing, you know, commercial grade or anything like that, more for ambiance. And then we have details. So, I guess with that, I'll turn it back to the board. I'm happy to answer any questions that any members have.
I appreciate that. Mr. Heaney, I'll go to your review first and then to the board for discussion. Touch upon everything in your view, or if there's anything you want to do?
Yeah, I mean, the two big things, I mean, you can see. Yeah, I really didn't have too many comments beyond the, the waiver requests. I'm not, like, I don't really have a hard line position on either one of them, on the board to, you know, think about what your past practices are. I don't know the nuances of a, you know, what's required with a N I P D's and a SWIP compared to what we would ask for in our stormwater protection plans. It's quite possible, like, you know, it will almost be redundant to request that. So, if they're preparing one, it could be shared with the board as, as the application in lieu of. I had asked if there was any type of comparison between what's being removed and what's being put in place in terms of a hardscape. I do get that even the patios could have, might not have cement joints, so that it could be essentially an infiltration area, so it might not be the biggest deal, but it's just a matter of grabbing sheet flow before it runs off the, the site. So, if they have some, if you have some calculations, if you know that, that number, it might be interesting to hear and think about that. And then just making sure that, you know, where the water is going, it's going towards your low points. You did say you're, it sounded like you said it, you're sending it towards existing places. So, I would suggest reshaping that, but. Off-street parking, I don't have a problem, you know, as I said, with keeping it as gravel, I understand the point of it. Could go down to a one-way circulation loop, just to, you know, eliminate some of it, if you wanted to consolidate it down, but it's, you know, that's more of a decision for you to make. Thank you for acknowledging the road red apron. I was gonna push on that one.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's a, I just, I don't want it. So I think it's, I think it's fine. I don't have a problem with it. Women in heels may have a problem with the gravel driveway, but that's, you know, for you to make a decision from a business perspective. I do like that they are reducing curb cuts. I missed the curb cut that actually goes out of Route four. I, I kind of was paying more attention to what's on Mary Hill Road. The fact that they're consolidating it down from three to one, I think is great. And the fact that it stays on Mary Hill, I think is fantastic. I am curious to know about, I know, I don't know the business side of things, but is fifty-eight parking spaces going to be enough? And what happens if it's not? Everybody drives to weddings and, and, you know, that's that just may be an issue, because you cannot, we cannot have people parking on either roadway. So that has to be a consideration. I don't know if it's a rule that the board wants to take action on though. And then, as Charlene had mentioned, managing noise might be the only other piece. So, that would be it.
Mr. Chair, I could speak to a couple of those if, if you'd like.
Please, yep.
So, let's see, so to clarify, first, discussing, you know, some of the comparison on the impervious areas. I did, because of your comment, you know, do some quantity, so we can have some, an open discussion on it. The, the square footage of that gravel access, which is probably a little bit low, our surveyors, they, they shot this when there was still some snow on the ground. So, the areas could be even a little bit larger than what we quantified. But you have about thirty-five hundred square feet of gravel area towards the front, that loop road that we're proposing to eliminate. So, that is going to be, that more than offsets the square footage that you have of the hardscape. It's about a wash on that portion. The gravel area, and again, a bit up for interpretation on how far that gravel really goes. We quantified it as about five thousand square feet. We're now fairly larger than that in that rear area. It's, it's closer to about twenty thousand square feet. The idea of doing, doing the one-way circulation, it's not a bad idea. The only thing I would caution against it is that a lot of times in my experience, when we've done gravel parking areas, even though there's gonna be people that are parking the, the customers and or the, the venue clientele, you probably want a little bit extra room, because you don't have all the striping and all the, like, officialness of, of a paved parking area. So I think, I, I would like to try to keep the, the circulation at the twenty-two, which, again, is not, you know, it's not twenty-four, it's twenty-two, I think, but that allows for that two-way flow and, you know, so that, that would be, that would be my preference, to, to keep it as that. The, the owners, not that this is a hundred percent of a solidified solution for the board, if that's a concern on the parking, but they do have an agreement on the abutting property. And so, the, the thought is that if they were to expand the venue or expand the services there and they needed more parking, there would be a potential opportunity to expand the parking lot to the west. Based on the discussions that I've had with them and the seating capacity that we have in the venue, because the, the venue is gonna be limited mainly based on septic capacity at this point. And so, we're, you know, we're proposing a one-hundred-and-fifty-seat venue, and it's kind of maxed and tapped out at that. And that's at a maximum capacity. And, and so for that reason, you know, we feel comfortable with the parking, but as I said, I don't know if, if it provides some comfort knowing that there is a potential opportunity to expand the parking. Obviously, we'd have to come back to the board for that. But, you know, if that were a problem, that could be addressed.
Is that something that could be provided, like memorialized in writing amid, as a condition, or is this, is this a gentleman's agreement at this point?
At this point, at this point, they have a legal agreement to, they have the property under agreement. They have not purchased the property yet. So, we were actually planning coming back before this board with a separate application to discuss some ideas with that property. You know, some other commercial opportunities, maybe a residential component. And that was gonna be something we were probably gonna come back to the board conceptually with and, you know, present that to you folks and get your feedback. If that feedback is positive, then I think they would move towards the purchase of the property, and obviously, they're committed to doing so. But if that feedback is not positive, or, you know, there's, they can't do what they think they'd like to be able to do for get the value of the property, then they may not purchase it. So, long story short, we wouldn't be able to solidify that in like a you know, a physical easement or something at this point, but that could change coming up, so. I mean, but at the same time, I mean, obviously, there could be a restriction put on the site plan that there would be no off-street, you know, on-street parking or anything like that, and they would be comfortable with that. And obviously, if they weren't following that, that would be a violation of their site plan and you have an enforcement provision from, you know, to, to handle that type of thing. So, we're comfortable with the parking as shown. You know, there is a provision for expansion, but that would be more likely, they would expand and potentially increase the capacity, enlarge the septic proposal, all of that. So it would be a multi-tier thing that would enlarge that, but that's not being planned right now. The, the venue size that, that they have is fully sustainable and, and works for their model as proposed, so.
The only other thing that I wanted to point out is that the fire department did send a letter. In their opinion, they, they gave some general ones, but more importantly, it was they had incomplete information to be able to fully provide a review. So, that is something you're gonna have to address. And some of the boards should either condition, or if this is continued, then it can be addressed, you know, before the next meeting.
And just to clarify that, my understanding is, I, it was not an incomplete amount of information from a site plan perspective, but also they review the building code components. And that component is not completed yet. So obviously, that could be a condition if and when we get to that point that, you know, obviously, the, the building plans, and they are working on the building plans, the internal fit-up plans and everything, those just weren't ready. I think that's why he was putting that caveat in there to say, yes, I can comment on the site plan, but I can't comment on the, the interior components as, for fire component, or for fire suppression or whatever would be required.
Well, and what, yes, you're right. You are right. It does, talk about the interior piece of it, but authority having jurisdiction component would impact the fire lane. And I don't know if you had one on here, or if you can even fit one.
Well, I guess, and I can meet with the fire chief and go through that. I guess I, I'm not sure what more he really needs. He obviously has two access points. He has access from Mary Hill Road directly. And he also has access from the lane directly adjacent to the front, or, well, call it the, the entrance side of the building from the parking lot area. So I mean, you know, there's no impeding, there's no parking spaces in that area, so he has direct access to the building, and he has direct access by parking on Mary Hill Road. So, I mean, if they want something clarified with signage or anything, so that there can't be parking or any of that, that we're happy to do that, but.
Yeah, I would definitely just double-check with him.
And that was a request anyway, right? I think he said no parking on Mary.
Well, yes, that was a separate one. Access road, no parking signage will be required. When he says access road, I'm presuming he means Mary Hill.
Yeah, I didn't know if he meant that or the driveway coming into the site. I couldn't.
Oh, yeah.
Some people refer to that as the access, because it's a.
Yeah.
It'd probably be both.
Yeah, I, we, because of the, again, the, the distance to the intersection of Route four there, I'm sure they, the road agent in the town would not want to see parking along the road there, on, on either side, especially.
Yeah, so like the driveway and the vertice.
The neck of the driveway.
Yes, I would.
He could be asking, talking about that. But then in this very, an entirely separate bullet point, he did talk about a fire lane. You know, I know what you're saying, but I just would want to make sure that they're okay with it.
Yeah, so that, that's something that would be cleared up, you know, between now and another meeting. So do anybody else have any other questions or comments? I know it's, we're getting a bit late here. I appreciate everybody's time. I want to, just members of the public here.
The septic as it stands right now is good for a hundred-and-fifty people in the venue?
No, we are proposing to upgrade the septic. We, we did fully design that component, and you can see that on the grading plan, that's sheet five. And so, that proposed septic, which is in a, I guess, a similar location to the existing, but it is, this is a new system that would be installed. And so, that would be a state permit that we would be required to get.
And the reason, that's what the nitrate septic was needed for, right? That additional gallons per day, or?
Well, believe it, no, believe it or not, I don't, I don't know why, I think it was contemplated as, as another potential use by the, some previous owner.
The previous owner had made an arrangement. They were planning on increasing the septic size.
Yeah, there were some previous uses that were gonna be a much higher use than yours, so it must've, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I.
It benefits you anyways.
Exactly. I mean, it allows us to put a larger capacity system closer to the property line, which is good, you know, because obviously, it's not a large, large lot.
And have test pits already been dug in that area? Because I don't think those are shit.
No, I did not, we did not dig a test pit yet. Obviously, we can make it work in that location with whatever the test pit says, including if it says that the water's on the surface. So I'm not really worried about that portion of it, but we haven't dug that. That is something that will need to be completed.
And then the, the nitrate easement that you're showing, you mentioned on the reference plan, that, that's on a prior plan. Is that actually recorded as a deed in the easement?
Yep.
Because the dates on these, I don't remember. Things, I remember.
And I think that's been placed for a little while, or is it conceptual?
No, I mean, that was kind of one of the first items. When they were contemplating purchasing this, I said, okay, I see that on a plan, but let's make sure that that's qualified and, and approved. Because obviously, that would make a big difference on what they could do. And it was. That, that is a, the reference that we're saying per plan, reference number one, that is shown, I, our plan references are called out on our existing conditions plan, sheet two, and that plan reference.
That's why I recommend it.
But, but is one of those plans, is that actually recorded?
Yes.
Is the deed, is under one of those, number two, three, or four? Is that the record number for any of those plans, or the?
This plan is recorded. That's why, that's why it's striking a bell.
Yeah, I, I can, I can clarify that, but I know, I know that the language and something showing that easement is recorded. I can clarify with my servants.
Oh, I read that question. I just remember a bunch of things coming before this board, it's like conceptual, and I don't know if they ever made us a design review for, for these two lots, especially the abutting lot, um, for different things, but I don't remember any of them ever going to an approval status. That, that's why I'm asking, you know, there's no plan reference there as to where it's reported with the registered deed, so I just wanna make sure that that's actual.
Maybe see if there's a plan number for that one?
Either deed or a record, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll cite the deed, uh, that's calls that out on the same spot.
The larger septic tank that's going in, will that hold more? Will you be able to have more than a hundred and fifty people in the venue?
Um, that's a good question. Um, I, I don't know exactly what the ratio is for that size and whether there's, uh, additional capacity, but, but the, I can tell you that the septic field itself is not designed for any more than that, so the tank doesn't really matter. Uh, you know, unless it, it, the, the whole, the whole septic system would have to be redesigned. And, and DES will not allow you just to slap a few more pipes on there, so it would be more of a, it would be like a complete replacement type system.
Looks like it's a, a replacement now though with the large.
This is, yes, and, but this is designed for the hundred fifty.
Uh, I see what you're saying.
Yep.
And another comment that, that was made earlier, uh, would be, so, well, going, going way back. First of all, this is a commercial use, it's a change of use, um, from what was currently there to what's being proposed. So we doubt, we wanna make sure that it fits our, our definition of commercial. I don't know if everybody is familiar with those or if you wanna.
It does.
For permitted use.
Yeah.
It does.
I, I would agree, so if there's disagreement there, please speak up. I don't think the buffer or the setback is being shown all around, so you're going from commercial to residential. We normally have a hundred-foot setback. Again, this is a pre-existing lot, but it's a change of use, um, so.
We do show the setback. Um, it makes, uh, makes about a square this big.
Yeah.
In the middle of the site. Put that in there.
But you, you'd be proposing, you know, pretty much all the parking within, uh, within the setback, uh, against the residential use, obviously.
Are you talking about this distance right here? Or are you saying the building? Gotcha.
We did hold the required pavement setback that you have in your regulations, which I think is, I think is twenty.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. Is that twenty, that's that twenty-foot separation between?
Yep, we, we made sure we held that on all, all sides, um, or, or all applicable sides.
And then, uh, you know, obviously I'm sure sound and, and things like that's gonna be, it would be a concern and, and, you know, maintain a, a pretty dense vegetative buffer, some other buffer between that and the residential side. And we have something in our site plan regs for that, you know, that it kinda outlines out a little bit better.
As I said, the sound component piece does, um, I mean, any, any outdoor gathering space would be on the other side of the barn, so, you know, on the roadside. So, they were actually, you know, we weren't at, we, we don't feel that sound is gonna necessarily be an issue to Mary Hill. It was more that, they want, we wanted to make sure that that space, recognizing that we didn't wanna have that, we didn't wanna have the, the outside venue space closer to the, to the neighborhood. We wanted to bring it to that side and that's why we supplemented on the, the roadside to kinda at least make that uh, an acceptable and, you know, good area for the outside venue space. Cause obviously you don't wanna be looking right at Route four.
Yeah, and I think the other, the other thing we would normally ask for on something like this would be, um, you know, kind of proposed or, or anticipated volume, you know, some number of events, uh, which I know with a new, new venue, it, it might be difficult to, to gauge, but obviously there's gonna be, there's gonna be a plan. And, you know, hours of operation kinda thing, so again, you know, whether it is outside music, inside music and things like that to, proposed hours or hours to be set by the board as to, you know, no outside whatever after a certain amount of time.
Does the town have like, um, I didn't check this, a, a noise ordinance or anything?
We don't, but we do have it. We do have noise, is it considered as a pollution item within our site plan review?
Of course, yeah.
Try to, um, again, balance the, the, the two uses, again, your commercial, abutting, residential. So try to find a, a balance there for, for both sides. Before we go too much further, I know it is getting late, but I do see some members in the audience, so I'm gonna open the public hearing now. So if you'd like to speak for, uh, or against the application, uh, please come on up and just identify yourself, uh, or if you have general questions.
I've got three hours of time.
Yeah, no. It's, it's a long night, and if, if you guys can, uh, we'll have you guys step, just cause the, our microphone technology is a little bit limited in here. So again, please just direct everything.
This is my mom, Magdalena.
I'm Magdalena on one Mary Hill Road.
Directly across the street from the.
Yep.
And you can imagine, I'm not happy.
Um, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's pretty much a residential area and now you're gonna be putting in a lot of noise. Let's face it, they're gonna be having a good time. There's gonna be inebriated drivers. It's just the way it is. Mary Hill Road, you see it, it's, I don't know if you, any of you know it, it's a small road. The parking, he's talking about the parking, people can't park on that road. Turning around in our driveway now, people are constantly turning around in her driveway and, uh, backing up over her flowers. Um, the people who are taking down the house now, they're constantly backing over onto the property. You know, the traffic, again, uh, again, about a month ago, I don't know how, how many of you know the area, but, uh, uh, Route four, there's always accidents. Somebody just took out the telephone pole directly across from Mary Hill Road, a brand-new pole. There's some guy wrapped himself around that. Um, somebody trying to take a left turn onto Mary Hill and someone trying to pass him and losing control. Um, the noise, there's no variance. I, usually there's a ten o'clock. But I, I didn't know the town doesn't have, doesn't even have a, a ordinance or anything like that on that. You know, um, besides the fact that my personal feeling, it'll devalue the property because, you know, you're going from what's pretty much residential now, you're gonna have a party atmosphere. Uh, you wanna add anything to it?
Um, no, not really. I just wanted to say also, there, that same area, there are constant car accident. If you ask the police, it's like all the time, the same area right across Mary Hill. I don't know why, but, and, uh, yeah, it's, the traffic is, has gotten so busy.
They're using it as a cut through now to.
Yeah, to Barrington.
To, uh, one twenty-five kinda, if you know, I don't know if you guys know the area at all, but, you know. It's a windy road, people are riding, walking, biking on it, you know. So that's it.
The noise level is really my biggest concern because I'm old enough, I can't sleep and I can't even imagine having that going on every night, most of the nights.
How close is your home to the road?
Oh, it's, my house is in a little bit, uh, two hundred feet maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah.
It's setback. If you drive, you know, if you drive by, you'll see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet.
Is it? Yeah.
So, so that's it. It's all we wanted to say.
Yeah, it just got me.
Voice, voice our opinion.
And just to confirm, you're the, that's the house that's on the corner of Mary Hill and Route four, right?
Yeah, the Cape.
Yes, yes.
So that's our concerns.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for listening.
Yeah, thank you very much, June.
Thank you.
Um, so if there's no other public comment, I'll close the public hearing. We can always reopen at another time. Um, so.
I would just like, I'd just like to respond to one part of that if I could.
Yeah, and then.
I would just like to say that as operators, it's our job to make sure that people aren't leaving inebriated. Um, we've been in operation at Tuckaway Tavern for ten years with no incidents. We are very strict, we're very professional in terms of how we serve our customers, so I understand your concerns there and we take it very seriously on our part as well. Uh, sound, we expected to be considerate and respectful of the neighbors. Um, and I, I'd love to work with you on that, but as we go forward, if we go forward. Um, you know, we don't, we don't, we're not looking to cause any headaches, put it that way. We're, we're very respectable operators.
But you are, but people are people.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, no, I understand.
They do get noisy, especially in front of some things.
No, I understand.
Uh, do you need us to stick around for anything?
You're welcome to, um, but, you know, there's gonna be some items on this tonight, so I don't foresee a final approval on this tonight. I expect there's gonna be continuance, but, um, so we get some input.
And that won't be.
Chance for Barrington to input and pa- chance for DOT to have an input.
Just probably to note that if there is a continuance, there won't be another, uh, mailer notification.
There will, there won't be.
There will not be, but it would be if the town website agenda that Kevin posts will have the case listed, so you might just need to keep an eye on the agendas, which kinda come out of what a weaker, yeah.
Seeing, seeing that he's.
I'd also ask that, um, any damage caused by people tearing down the house. I'd like to address that if I, I come stop by at some point.
I fixed it already. I have a wrong garden up front. The twofive door was smashing everything.
He's asking if there isn't anything that he might be able to do.
Yeah, I know.
I'd be more than happy to make up for it.
But it, it's all set, so.
I apologize for that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna bring it back up this way. Um, so, we do try to balance the, the usage. Thank you very much for the time. Uh, so obviously this area of Route four and the town specifically is, is identified for commercial and industrial, so, you know, we do have in our regs the, to try to balance the abutting usages of residential. Um, and that's why site plans are here as well, is to try to have these conversations and set times that may not be in there, but, we've done the same with a auto body place down the road further and they had set hours for, uh, when they could have customers and be working on cars. So, that, bring it back. So obviously we, we have the fire chief's comments or some, I'm sure there'd be more. You, you've already mentioned you'd be speaking with the chief to try to wa- figure it, figure out that and hash that out, uh, so we look forward to that. Um, we do submit these, I don't know if the police chief has had any responses yet or had a chance to respond. Yeah. Yeah, so that would be another one. So, depending on what the police chief says, again, based on the number of vehicles coming in and out, there could be a request for, uh, detail at the time of hours of when you expect, you know, if sixty cars are coming in at once, again, turning off Route four under Mary Hill, just because of, you're on the opposite side of the crest of Route four. Um, there's that, but DOT may also address some of that. They didn't, I would, I would look for DOT's input just because of that intersection and they control it, not us. So those are a few things, and obviously, yeah, to just hammer out some hours for, for any kind of set start and stop times, uh, give an idea of number of, you've got the number of people, but number of events. Uh, the town does have an event permit now. We might, you have to just check with the select board if you're gonna get subjected to that as well.
There's a threshold, right? Has to be over.
Over a hundred, I think. I, I, I'm not familiar, I have to go back and look at that one.
I'm assuming that would probably be for like a one-off type of event rather than a, an approved venue. I think that this jurisdiction falls to this board.
Uh, it, it's both, because there's the, there's a event in town, but it's multiple times a year that, that is subjected to that, so. I just wanna double check.
No problem.
Again, I don't wanna like have you say, you know, go and then you find out.
It's new as of last year.
So that, that, that's a new thing. Um, and it may only be to inside stuff, I mean, outside stuff, so. Anybody else have any questions or comments at this point?
I, I just had, I had a couple of questions. You talked about the landscape lighting and then the parking lot lighting, but were you gonna put any, um, lighting on the building to light up the building or any signage out on the, on, on the front way?
There was, ye- yes, there is, there is gonna be proposed, I, I call it landscape lighting, cause it's, it's a low voltage, you know, LED-type lighting. Um, there will be some aesthetic lighting on the building, just so it's not a dark. I don't know if you planned on lighting any signage or anything.
No, honestly, there's one existing sign that came with the barn that's pretty much gonna be the signage. We're not planning on any promotional signage.
Thank you.
Do you all have any signage on Route four?
There's really no.
To turn in? If we've got all this shrubbery over here, how's anybody gonna see you?
We, I guess we'd be open to it, maybe, maybe some sort of like an old carriage house sign on the corner or something like that, but, you know, nothing elaborate for that shore.
People will have found your business by researching it on the internet and they will know where it is.
I assume GPS.
It's not something you drive down the road and say, oh, lucky there, I'll go, I'll go get married.
Uh, yeah, exactly.
So we do have in our zoning, a pretty substantial like sign ordinance, signage thing, so you just, if you are planning on any, you wanna make sure that it, that it meets those.
I guess it's more of a destination is what we were thinking, so you would plug it into your GPS.
No large LED.
Yeah. We're not looking to draw customers in.
I mean, not too many people drive around looking for event socks, just driving up and down the road.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and then, you know, another thing would be probably like promotional stuff or items where you're giving out to, to people that are coming there, you know, for the directions would probably be always referencing like, say, like the Lee Circle to Northwood or that stretch, as opposed to saying, oh, Dover, Mary Hill Road kinda thing, which, yeah, I don't know why, why send people that way anyway, but.
Did, did you want, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Sue.
Could you confer with the, uh, arborist on the tree and shrub selections that you have, um, included?
Uh, w- w- we didn't utilize an arborist, but we do have a licensed landscape architect in our staff, uh, that was, you know, choosing these plantings to accomplish the buffering goal, but also that can grow at the proper height to work with the existing canopy and whatnot, so it was, it was a thought-out process.
But my thought in looking at your variety of, of choices is that the, the blue spruce and the hemlock are both under threat in this, in this region. With the woolly indelged, with the hemlock, and the blue spruce are just drowning up and dying. So, an alternative for those two might be.
Okay, I can.
Looking into.
I said two hemlocks, about eighteen inches diameter die, and I live like half a mile from here.
They're just being wiped out.
Over the winter, they just.
And the spruces too.
Yeah, the indelged is, uh, pretty, pretty well established here.
I had a, a couple, um, I, I was also in support of the paved apron coming in. I think that's a great idea. Otherwise you'll be fixing the hole every time, after every event. The, so the existing, you, you kinda mentioned some of those areas, the existing for the, versus the proposed, so is there, is it safe to say that, you know, if you look at the gravel and the existing pavement, there's obviously you kind of replaced the front driveway loop with maybe some patio space. And then the existing gravel, there's really essentially like an expansion of, I think you said about five thousand existing, twenty thousand or so. So maybe, I don't know, fifteen thousand plus minus square feet of new gravel is essentially approximate. I am, I, 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 I like the idea of keeping it gravel. Um, I do think it's better aesthetic for, especially if you're going to something like a barn, um, for a venue. Uh, the only issue I think I have is that, you know, that material's going to get packed down. It's, you know, yeah, it's better than pavement, but it's not perfect and eventually it will, you'll run. Um, this kinda goes to the thing I've been thinking about the most, and that was the waiver request regarding stormwater. I do think it's a small site, um, there is going to be a lot of existing vegetation, but we have this parking lot that's going to be concentrating flow and actually the, you know, based on the topography, there'll be essentially one kind of corner of the parking lot that might see the most flow. I guess what I would say is, I'm in support of maybe a waiver from the stormwater in terms of an analysis. Cause I think there is still a good amount of, uh, open space. But I think it might be nice to incorporate some degree of a shallow basin or level spreader in that, essentially where you're showing the snow storage. Just because we're going to have runoff of gravel and stuff, and even though you might have an interest in that adjacent property in the future, it might just be nice to, something to consider that there will probably be some runoff of sediment and, uh, that might just be sufficient enough.
One, one item that we've done many times in the past, in, in, including with paved parking lots, uh, is it utilize a, a stone trench edge, uh, on the perimeter of the parking. Um, we're actually in a section of fill because we didn't want the parking lot to be too steep. So, we're in about two feet of fill in the area of where the, you know, the parking lot ends. And what I could do is I could specify a, a stone drip. And what I could do is I could specify a, a stone drip edge and. Uh, it sounds like I think you would know what I'm talking about, but just for clarification for anyone that might not be familiar is. What we would do is you would, you would unearth a section of, of, of the earth and fill it with a, um, a fabric lined. A- and fill it up almost like a French drain with, with free clean stone. So this wouldn't be gravel or, you know, it, this would be a clean stone and. It can, i- i- aesthetically, it looks nice and then also it can, you know, it, it could be anywhere two to three feet deep. So that initial flush or on a, on a, if there is some concentrated runoff, it'll go into there and drain in. And then if it does overflow, it'll be kind of a very natural level spreader to go out. So I, I mean, if that would make the board more comfortable, I'd be happy to.
I know it would make me more, yeah, I mean, in terms of the request for the waiver and, you know, there is, I mean, I would say there's a. In my mind, I always consider, and we don't have in our regulation now, but it might be something that's considered in the future, is that a lot of towns require that gravel be. Mu- considered pavement because a lot of people do gravel and they're like, ah, five years from now I pave it, or a new person comes in and just paves it. I think that's a good protection effort and I'd like, like you said, it would probably less cleaning up of the grass if you have a big storm or something like that, so. That was kind of my feeling in regards to the waiver request. Everything else we talked of, and then I was definitely in support of. I lived near here. Um, I drove by the accident that he referenced. The, definitely the, I am in support of the no parking. I guess the question is, how does that, is that a board of selection move or a parking? Do we condition it and then somebody else has to enforce it with signage? I don't know if we can.
I think we could condition it. I can reach out to the.
I don't think it was gonna fight it, but.
And our select board, uh, town measure, just on that part, just to see what they would want.
I mean, I'm happy to add a note to the site plan that says no parking from this on Mary Hill Road. Uh, I mean, I don't even know if you necessarily need signage at that point because it's their responsibilities of running the venue to, you know, if somebody's like. Oh, I'm gonna just park here. They have to say, no, you can't do that, you know, as part of the venue.
I think the fire depart, I think the fire chief mentioned maybe signage, which doesn't hurt to throw one or two, and if that's the case, we'll let them choose it. But I'm definitely in support of that, cause this is kind of, kind of on a little hump there. I think the site distance is okay because you're high enough up on that little crest. Yeah, I think that was kind of my thought. Stormwater one, I think something like that would make me feel better. Um, taking action on a waiver request.
The signage, I think is, the no parking signage should be very important because these are people that are coming that have no thought necessarily. About impact or any, they're coming to a, a wedding, an event or whatever. They're thinking about how, where they're gonna, how they're gonna be able to get out of there. And the parking on the, the, the quick, well, just, we'll just park on the road, never mind the damn parking lot. And there's, if there's a clear sign that says you can't do that, they're not people that are out to break the law. They're just trying to get home quick.
If it wants to be an enforceable thing by the police, you can have a no parking sign that can just be a no parking sign. If it needs to be enforceable by the police, then it has to be passed by the board of select.
I was gonna say.
There has to be a law in the books that they can point to to say, you are getting this violation because you violated this.
You'll see the fine posted usually on the sign.
I can, I can make sure we reach out to the select board or the town.
It depends on what, yeah, how far they wanna go.
Out of that.
I do think at a minimum, we'll start with signage and then we kind of figure out that.
I think for you guys, the second this starts to spill out onto the public way, you know, you're gonna start having a lot of eyes on your, on your business.
Well, again, you don't want.
You're gonna have phone calls from staff.
Yeah, and this isn't a judgment on, on either of you or the applicant, but once approval is granted, you know. And say, you know, you run it for a year and just said, I'm done, you know, I've had a lot of fun. But then it goes to somebody else and maybe they're not, is running in the same manner.
The naval ladies that we saw tonight will be nothing.
So sometimes we wanna make sure that we just either make it so it's written down somewhere or that it's, you know, captured.
I have another question too.
Of course.
Uh, with the Tuckaway, with Tuckaway, you have a little store on the side, a couple of them. Do you plan on doing that with this as well?
Not this, but potentially with, with the adjacent property in the future, if that's something that we. It's, it's, it's an option. Not on this plot, no. Meaning the, the land adjacent to it.
It's a separate parcel, yeah, which would come before us, but, but. But for this, the plan.
Yeah.
Let's propose a venue.
We want a shorter commute to the store is what we're getting at.
Just as a, just as a quick question, um, you, this board would allow us to come, you know, for a non-notice informal hearing, just to.
Conceptual?
Yeah, okay.
It's a single sheet application through Kevin.
Yeah, conceptual, it can't be, you know, engineered plans, you know, it's more pen and paper kind of thing or, or.
Yeah, we just wanna give, give the feedback and.
Yes. That would go through Kevin and we'd get it onto the agenda, yeah.
I, I, I'd just like to say, I, I think we should push the fire, the police to, to comment on this. Um, because it's, it's a lot of cars in a little period of time, it, you know, two times, uh, you know, two times an event, you know, coming in and coming out, and so. I think, um, I think having, um, having her review on it and her thoughts is, is important. Um, cause like you said, I mean, DOT is gonna look at it and personally, based on what I've seen in Nottingham, DOT is just gonna, you know, say, yeah, whatever.
Do whatever.
And, um, but, you know, um, a- a- as we've heard, I mean, that is, that's, that's a, that's a dangerous section. Kind of, you know, from Mary Hill all the way down to Free, I mean, just that whole thing turning, so I really would like to. To push the police chief to, to review this and to provide some input on it because it might require details at certain periods of time. So, I think that.
Yeah, again, we're just trying to minimize prevent, what do we can?
Right.
Without over, overdoing it, so, yeah.
I had, uh, just one more I forgot about.
Yep, in mind.
Uh, the last one I had boxed here, um, it looks like, those are two ADA spaces, yes, two ADA spaces there. I assume the spot rates are showing are ADA compliant. Sometimes being gravel, it's a little, is there any?
We warp that to two percent in there, yeah.
Is there any desire to make that like a bricked area to, cause you're gonna get erosion that eventually can wash out and that. Back of the parking is along, I guess we'd call the valley of the drainage. Was there any thought to having that as like a pay, just the ADA, cause oftentimes. It should just in the ADA.
So that those are.
It could be pavement, it could be bricks, a, a paver or something.
Yeah.
And also, it's, just because I know.
That makes sense.
We, it's surrounded, it's surrounded anyway by, you know, the hardscape, so we can just extend that into that area.
Cause I just know you don't wanna be caught with some erosion and then you're over two percent on your surface and then. Mines start coming in, so that was, that was my last thought. Thank you.
And then la- the cemetery that's shown, the distance there looks like it's well over twenty-five feet and that's a, from my memory, that's a, like a. Stoned end, so like you know where it is. It's a, it's a delineated cemetery. It's not like you're gonna. Yeah, it's not like there's potential for things being outside of that area, is what I'm trying.
Hopefully not, right?
But you're not closing development in that area either. But you are well, more than twenty-five feet from the edge of that. It looks like thirty, thirty-five.
Oh, you got twenty, the, the paving's about twenty.
Twenty-five probably.
Yeah.
Which I think is a state, a state standard on that. Is there anything further from the, uh, the board? So we have some takeaway items and some additional requests to get, uh, to get in. So, m- my, from my memory tonight, that confirm that this easement is actually recorded and, and put that on the plan and please, um. Just don't have another conversation with the fire chief if, and we can reach out to the chief as well. It's just what they would like to see on the plan, uh, for filing and access and things of that nature. We will make sure that Barrington and DOT get notified and request that they provide input or comment for whatever the date is that we set as the next meeting. I will communicate to the select board and road agent to see if they have anything about, uh, requesting like no parking signs or anything along, uh. Mary Hill and if that would come from us or from them. And, um, and I'll ask Mr. Lemieux to just follow up with the police chief as part of the, uh, DOT and Barrington part.
Um, I also recommend that I, I'll follow up with the fire chief, clarify if what's needed and I'll filter it through many, uh, don't contact.
That sounds, that sounds perfect. I, no.
The chain of command, I got it.
Yep.
Uh, was there anything else from anybody? Oh, and then, I'm sorry, and then just clarify hours, the proposed hours of operation. We already know capacity is, is already clearly outlined.
It sounds like there's not a ton of plan modifications to be made, but is there, to confirm that, is there any interest in taking action on the two waiver requests only? Because that will affect, if for some reason they don't pass, that would have altered their plan.
No, I think, I think that makes sense based on what those requests are.
I'll make a motion if you're, if you're ready. All right, so first I will make a motion, uh, to approve the waiver request from section ten point three, uh, one A, which is the stormwater management plan. Due to the disturbance of over thirty thousand square feet, so I make a motion that we approve the waiver request from that section.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Mr. Davies. Any further discussion on that waiver? See, none, all's a favor, please say aye. Motion carries, and all opposed, motion carries six zero.
I'll also make a motion to approve the waiver request, um, from site plan regulations, section ten point five, uh, two D two. Um, it's under traffic impact analysis, but it's, uh, a waiver request for the use of gravel parking in the lieu of pavement. Within that section.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Mooney. Any further discussion? All's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries six zero. And obviously, we talked about paving the twelve foot apron. I think that's in our requirement, I think it's twelve feet, um, which makes sense, especially when you go and gravel the pavement and then. Talked about doing a drip edge for the, uh, for that portion of it. So we got some meeting dates. I think the next meeting is July, uh, June twenty-second, which is. Probably pretty quick to get some of those comments back. July eighth would probably be the.
July thirteenth.
Sorry, July thirteenth would be probably the next one.
The question is, can the plan have it to be done by then, or if you're, if you have a desire to move that fast? I'm not sure what your timeline is.
For, for which date?
July thirteenth.
Probably July thirteenth.
Oh, yeah, we certainly have it.
With deliverables a week ahead.
I could probably, I could probably have them done for the, the June one, but I, I, I agree that hearing back from everybody, that would probably be a little tight for, you know, I want. Cause I, we, we'd rather hear from fire and DOT and everybody else, but as far as the plan discussion, I'll have everything in a week ahead of time from the July hearing.
Yeah, so July, so I, thirteenth would be the case continue date and July sixth would be a deliverables date. Um, that is a holiday week obviously, but that's fine.
You say July sixth?
Thirteenth.
Or, no, but for the deliverable, you want the sixth?
We usually do a week ahead, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll put that request to anybody we connect to as well, that we request that they comment back by July sixth. So we can have it reviewed by, before then.
Lastly, is there, I know we, in terms of a sidewalk, I know it's very accessible from the road. I, I've driven by it before. Just wanna make sure nobody else is gonna think of one in the future. I don't like when they creep up on us.
Yeah, because of the high visibility of this location, I'm fine without a sidewalk.
And the existing driveway is pretty much already there anyway, so, yeah.
Could I, Mr. Schick, I just ask one question?
Of course, yep.
I don't know if, um, out of everything that we've talked about, I, I mean, the only unknown that I see is, uh, you know, feedback, feedback from police and DOT. If they're, we're looking for some additional information or clarification or anything. Is it possible to at least request something a little ahead of time so that if I need to add something to the plan or whatever, I can add it to that deliverable set? Prior to the sixth, meaning like if you ask them to come for the sixth, then, you know, I, I won't be able to do anything for the plans, so I don't know if.
Oh, you're saying request that, try to get it.
I mean, if I ask DOT, they're not gonna have the same effect as if you guys asked DOT to.
DOT will often sometimes condition because of the timeline issue, but from internal, turn, internal departments, we could put a date request back.
Like seven one?
Yeah, I mean, I, um, the chief's pretty good about getting back and I'm sure both chiefs will be, right? So I, I'll give you your.
That'd be perfect. That way, you know, if they have a specific signage or location of signage, or if I need to change something with the fire lane, I can do all that before I get. Things back to, to the board.
So I'll, 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 I'll try to give it to you.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think, so again, intent is to abandon the current driveway that was on Route four, the curb cut that happened to be there. Abandon that one, ban the other one that's on, on Mary Hill and go to a single.
Yes.
So I think that portion will probably make DOT happier that, that you have one less, uh, access point.
Yeah, that's why I think it actually, DOT might not even really wanna give feedback because you're not actually on the right way, but.
Yeah. They'd be very much willing to give feedback if we were keeping that curb cut for the, for the venue.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not gonna say that we're requiring your feedback, but give them an opportunity to have feedback. That way, you know, keeps everybody happy.
Okay.
A motion would be in order to continue to July thirteenth with deliverables by July sixth.
I'll make a motion that we continue case number two-two-dash-zero-zero-eight-dash-sit to the July thirteenth meeting at seven PM.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Mooney. Uh, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries six zero. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sticking it out.
All right, the next, so we have, let me just see what else on the agenda for tonight that. No additional public comment tonight. We have approval minutes for May eleventh. I propose we, um, push all those to the next meeting.
So moved.
Anybody has a, uh, any important updates that they would like to bring up, please do so now.
Yep.
Otherwise, I appreciate everybody's, uh, time. This is a late meeting. We had a lot on the agenda and we, we muscled through and I, I appreciate everybody's time. Uh, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.